All right, well, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Brockton Planning Board. This is Tuesday, April the 6th, 2021. And I first of all, want to welcome our new member, Mr. James Sweeney. I guess you'll get, we have his other members Larry Hassan. My name is Bob Pelagi, we have Reggie Thomas and Tony Gonzalez. But as I said, it's kind of chips passing in the night because two are leaving, two are staying. But you'll get up to speed with it. At this time, I'm required to read this public statement. I am calling this April the 6th, 2021 Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board to order. My name is Bob Pelagi and I'm the Chair of the Board. This meeting is being recorded. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Novell Coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April the 6th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. For those of you joining us by phone who want to ask a question, please press star nine to raise your hand. A copy of the recording and transcript will be posted to the city's webpage within 72 hours. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure count accuracy. At this time, I will conduct a forum call. Board members, please respond in the affirmative to indicate your attendance at this meeting. Larry Hassan?
Here.
Tony Gonzalez?
Here.
Reggie Thomas?
Yeah.
James Sweeney?
Here.
And Bob Pelagi is here. With five members voting in the affirmative, I declare we have a forum. Okay, tonight's agenda, please locate a copy of tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda is reorganization of the board. That typically happens in March, we push that off to April. And I'm going to ask if there's no objection that we push that off to the last item this evening.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay. I also want to note for the record, I apologize, we also have in attendance Mr. Rob May, City Planner, Pam Gurley, Administrative Assistant, Risa Sanai, Administrative Assistant, and Chief Williams. Welcome to the meeting. Okay, so we have, the next item is review and acceptance of the minutes. That would be of the February the 22nd, 23rd meeting and the March the 2nd meeting. Next would be endorsement of A and R plans, subdivision plans, and all lot releases. We do have, let's see, A and R plans, we've got 93 Pleasant Street, and we've got 10 to 12 Harvard Street. Lot releases, there's 41 Draper. Don't have any background on that one. Woodland Park, I think we were all given correspondence on that one. That's a potential eight lots, eight lot release, and then 236 West Chestnut Street. And the actual agenda items are as follows. Permission to return to the ZVA 598 Montello Street, that's been withdrawn. Permission, second agenda items, permission to return to the ZVA 60 to 70, 58 to 70 Field Street. That has been continued to May the 4th, 2021. Item three, return to the zoning board of appeals, Albert Avenue. That was denied on November the 10th, 2020. Nelson Montero is the applicant. Number four, site plan approval amendment, 568 Montero Street, that's a garage office. That's J.K. Holmgren. Five is site plan approval, 944 Warren Avenue, that's a residential units ET Engineering. Six is site plan approval, 30 Intervale Street, mixed use, Jacob Driscoll Engineering. Seven is preliminary subdivision, 50 Farrington Street, it's a two-lot residential subdivision, J.K. Holmgren Engineering. Number eight is definitive subdivision. It's part of plot 97 Pleasant Street, it's an 18-lot residential subdivision. W Engineering is the engineer and CLM is the developer. And the last agenda item is continuation of site plan approval. It is a 40A project, 223, 261 Thatcher Street. It's POUA Holdings LLC. So that's all lineup for tonight. Has everybody had a chance to look at, review the minutes of the meeting for Feb. 23 and March the 2nd?
Yes.
Yes.
Much questions concerned?
Nope.
If none, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the site minutes, I mean the meeting minutes.
Second.
Made and approved the second. On the roll call vote, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay, so next item.
But.
Sure.
From a formality standpoint, is James allowed to vote on those minutes, Bob?
No.
No.
Oh, he's not, pardon me, I am sorry. You are correct, thank you for that correction, Reggie, I am sorry. Yeah, thank you. It still carries with four votes, but thank you for that. The next item is endorsement of A and R plans, subdivision, and lot releases. Yeah, so we have two A and R plans, 93 Pleasant Street and 10 to 12 Harvard Street. The only thing that I had on question of concern was that the, I think it's the one on Harvard Street. That's the one where that's the two lots, one of the old city situations, we've divided many of those, where you have a house in the back and a house in the front. And I just wanted to make absolutely sure that someone checked to make sure that the utilities on the back house don't pass through to the front house. That would be the only concern I have with those.
I did speak with engineering on that, and I contacted Azu Tonaru and gave him the, and asked him to make sure that the utilities were separated if they were combined.
Okay, because that would be, once those are, once those are separated, recorded and deeded out separately, if that back house needs utility service, it would be tough to get it. So as long as that's been checked. Are there any other issues or comments on the two A and Rs?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As Zoo has raised his hand, if you would like him to allow it, allow him to speak?
Certainly.
As Zoo, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for, for that, Mr. Chairman. I do believe that we are, we okay with the, with 10 and 12 Harvard Street, and we're gonna make sure that the, that the utilities are separated. I would, I would note though, that, that we will take care of that, but it's not germane to the, to the 81L exemption filing that we've done on these A and R plans. So I just want to kind of make that, because, because they were A and R endorsement, it's not one of those things that you do with, with any conditions. But we do note that we will take care of those utility separations. It'll be, it'll behoove us to do that.
Well, I mean, the reason that we're suggesting is, I guess the biggest, first reason that we're suggesting it, Azu, was to avoid any problems after the plan is recorded and the properties are deeded out. But the secondly, you'd have to come back with another, if this was, you'd have to come back with a revised plan. So it was only with good intentions that we brought that to your attention.
Oh, no, and I'm echoing, and I'm echoing your comments, Mr. Chairman, I'm just saying that we will take care of that as a matter of course. I'm just noting that it is not something that can be made a condition of endorsement, that's all.
Okay, are there any other comments on those? Okay, hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion to, let's see, we have to do these separately, I believe, correct?
I think you can make one motion.
Okay, for the both of them, okay.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the two A and Rs, the 93 Pleasant and 1012 Harvard?
Motion to approve A and R, 93 Pleasant Street, 1012 Harvard Street.
I second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to accept the two A and Rs on the, let's see, did you, okay, so before I make a similar mistake, Mr. Sweeney, did you have the benefit of having that information ahead of the meeting? Did you say, did you see this information? You're muted, by the way, Mr. Sweeney.
Send the Google file with every.
I, yes.
All right, all right, so motions are made and seconded on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay. The next thing is lot releases, we'll take them in order. 41 Draper, so has that one been signed off by, as far as you know, Pam or Rob, signed up by DPW?
Yes, this was a split of a lot. The front half of the lot is on Kingman Street, this is the back half of the lot. And the utilities, the only work in the street was utilities, and that were, those were pulled off the street, and I have the inspection letter from DPW.
All right. Let's do these separately, because I think they're going to have different results. So some, let's see, lot releases require, yes, they do, they require a vote.
Yes.
Yes, they do. So Draper, let's.
They are not public hearings, but.
They require a vote, yes, no, you're right. Okay, so let's take Draper. Motion, motion to accept, a motion to release lot 41 Draper, please.
Make a motion to release lot 41 Draper.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay, the second item is Woodland Park, Woodland Park lots, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32, and 33, so there's eight.
I make a motion.
I think.
Make a motion to release lot, Woodland Park's lot 26, 27.
We, thank you, we need some discussion.
Yeah, do we have to read into the log this, this email we received?
Well, this is, this is the, this is the one, if I may, Larry, this is the one that we see, this is the one, if we just to quickly touch on the background here, that the, there was a neighborhood association that's been established up there, and they've come to the planning board and to the mayor's office and to Rob May's office on different issues. There's been different, how would you say, situations of discontent there, and they're represented by one spokesperson who did send that correspondence. There, there continues to be a lot of concern on the part of the neighbors about the lack of performance and the lack of cooperation on the part of the developer. So this, now, I understand that, although I learned today that there's been money that's been posted for the, for the remaining work, but I still have concerns about releasing these lots, because unless you have at least an adequate amount of money, I'm not suggesting that the developer might do this, but, I mean, he could essentially walk away from this and with his, with his released lots, and, and then you'd have no leverage, so.
Mr. Chair?
Myself personally, looking at the correspondence that was sent, we can certainly open this to a very quick discussion, I don't want to spend a lot of time with this. My suggestion to the board would be that we, that we take the, that we take the correspondence that was, that's been sent to the city, send it to the developer, the developer doesn't yet have it, and continue this item for a month and see what kind of response you get from the, from the developer. That's my thought. I'd open it up to anybody else's thoughts.
I must have missed that receipt of that, if you want to forward it to me, if it was in the Google files, I can't open those, so.
It was a separate email that went out to everybody.
Yeah.
To, Tim, did you want to mention something?
I, I did. We have worked with this developer to secure this sum of money. He has asked to change his method of surety, which is his right.
Yeah.
We've received several estimates, but he worked, it's outstanding, to the road and some other issues, and all those were verified by DPW. We added a 20% contingency to that amount to make sure that the city was protected.
In other words, in other words, the monetary amount that you're holding exceeds the, the cost of the work to be done?
By 20%.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know from the city's perspective. I kind of, in a way, feel slightly a little bit bad for the neighborhood there. Once these lots are released, and in the grand scheme of development, when you have eight lots, it's the prices, price points that they're getting now, I'm not suggesting that the developer's going to do that. He hits, that all of a sudden, how much, what's the, what's a dollar amount, Pam, that you're holding, 30, 30,000?
60,000.
Oh, 60,000, all right, well, that up to the end.
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I made a suggestion, that's just, I'm just one member, but I made a suggestion that we, given the, given the number of times that that neighborhood has spoken out, contacted the mayor's office, I don't have to tell you, I mean, contacted Rob's office, I thought, give, give the, my suggestion, I thought was, give the developer a one-month's cycle, a one-month's chance to respond to that letter where it's, the couple that was done by the spokesperson for the neighborhood, I thought did a pretty good job presenting that, but that's my thought. What do the others think about that?
Mr. Chair, it's Larry. I read the, I mean, I'm reading it now, but I read it anyways, and I took a drive up there myself a couple days ago after I saw the, the email, and they, they do have a lot of, I think, legitimate complaints, although the developing is going on up there, I think there's three houses that are going up right now. You know, one of the things that stuck out to me, there used to be that there was a gate there off of Armistine going into the subdivision, it's no longer there. They made mention of item number six here, there's an install, some, one of the neighbors installed a 96-foot-long fence on the land that they do not own. I can't verify whether they own it or they don't own it, but I think that's part and possible to the fact that there's really not a true homeowners' association going on up there either. I think it's still kind of being handled by the developer, am I wrong in that?
It is.
Yeah, so.
It is still, the developer is still in charge in a homeowners' association, and the, we have been advised of the issue with the fence, and that's up to the property owner?
Right, that's more of a property ownership, yeah, that I understand, so, I don't know, I just, I, I think based on the number of responses we had last time around on this and seeing this now, I'm kind of on board with, you know, continuing this at least one more month and see how the developer responds, and see if they can satisfy some of the residents up there, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I mean, it just lets the developer know that there are, you know, some level of checks and balances in place, and it's not going to get rubber stamped, he's got to, you know, take in the concern of, of the neighbors and the butters, so I like holding this off for another month as well.
I agree. Would someone like to make a motion to, first of all, alert the developer of the, of the neighborhood's concerns and postpone this or continue it for a month, please?
Right. Motion to continue to alert developer on some of the issues needed, I don't know how else you want to, you know, title this, but motion to continue to next month?
You know, and alert the, and alert the developer, yeah?
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded, let's see, vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay, last, last lot release item is 236 West Chestnut Street, if you could fill us in on that one, Pam.
Risa, did you receive the check today?
Yes, I did, he's all set.
Okay, and it was for the amount we discussed? Okay. These are two houses that unfortunately were issued building permits without the lots being released.
Okay.
And it was during the whole beginning of COVID, and so the houses are partially up, and then the permits were stopped.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure that during one of our planning board meetings and even in the tech meetings, we approved, right? We just didn't get.
Correct.
Right, so.
But they shouldn't have been issued a permit, so at, at this point.
Do they have to go back and reapply with Building Department?
No.
No, the permits are just on hold.
Okay. They need to post, but you, what you just said, they're post the surety, right?
They have posted surety for the work that needs to.
Remains to be done.
Needs to grind and overlay the road.
Okay, and the, and the amount of money that you have secured is at least sufficient to do the work?
That was what his estimate said, and then again, we added 20% to that.
Okay. All right, well.
Risa, how much was the check?
10,800.
So 10,800, 11,020%, so you added another.
That was the 20%. He's got a small patch of road that unfortunately, what he did, because he didn't read the plan, was to put two patches in the road instead of grinding and overlaying the length of the subdivision, the two houses, so that's the work that needs to be done. So it's a small amount of work, but.
Right. And they know they have to do it, right, obviously?
He understands that now, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Because, I mean, I drove by, you know, like, when I saw the address, I was like, lot release, but, I mean, the houses are up.
Correct, but he can't, his permits are on hold.
Okay. I don't really have any other questions with it, I think, you know, I think you should, my opinion, I, I'm going to say yes to a lot release.
Yeah, having no other issues there, I think, I think the base has been covered. So we're holding the, the appropriate amount of money for the lot release, so would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve lot release 236 West Chestnut Street.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded on the roll call vote, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. So first agenda item is.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I just go on record for a second, please?
Yes, sir.
Certainly, I agree with what we did with Woodland Parks, but I did not receive that email. I, Risa just forwarded it to me, everyone was addressed except for me, so just to go on record, that's all, thank you.
We did not send that email.
Mr. May?
Yes, I have a comment from Councilor Nick Castro regarding the Thatcher Street project. She thought that the board had agreed to move this to the front of the agenda. Does the board remember making that arrangement?
You know, I think you're right, I think we might have at the end of that meeting last week, because.
I don't remember that, but I, I don't know, I'm not a tourist, and I don't remember that.
You do recall?
Yeah.
I don't remember giving it a position, but.
Yeah, because now it's number nine. Is there any issue with maybe going through that now, or no?
I don't, I don't, I don't have a particular problem with it, if you want to take it out of order. I assume by her comment, that she doesn't want to wait till the end of the agenda, I guess. I mean, it was the last thing added to the agenda, that's why it's there.
Which is at the board's pleasure.
Um, we ready to move on that one? Do we have anything we need to discuss that one?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, well, let's move, then let's move nine to, into the first position. Again, I don't recall making any sort of concession, but that's okay. So the next agenda item is site plan approval 40R, 223, 261 Thatcher Street, it's POUA Holdings. This is the one that we had a second round of, in our special meeting on this, and then the board made comments, it went back to, I guess it went for one final round with peer review with Beta, and then Beta, Beta has responded, and that came in, that their response was addressed to its latest today, so that's where that stands. So the, the, is the applicant on, or can you bring him on?
Yes, I'm moving them over now. From up to panelists.
Make me a co-host so I can help.
I have, you are.
Okay.
Bill, who else is on your team, please?
Hi, Rob, we have, I think, Brian Kuchar, Jay Simansky, Jim Burke, I think Jeff Dirk was, was going to be on, and then from the planning office, perhaps Dan Rebenowitz and POUA Office, so looks. And I will also reach out to people as well, if you don't, if there's anyone you don't see, if you can let me know, Rob.
HW Group, that's your engineer, isn't it?
That's the engineer, yes.
So will you be the, again, Mr. Grogan, good evening.
Good evening.
Will, will you be the spokesperson for this evening for this item?
I think Jim Burke would probably take the, the lead, and then he'd let me know when it's my turn to chime in.
All right.
If, if there are other attendees that were missing, please raise your hand, so we can move you over, if there are other panelists or other people part of the present, presentation team. I think we might have them all, but if you see other people need to be moved, please let me know.
Yeah, I think we have everyone, so I think we can proceed, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
All right, good, good evening, Attorney Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I won't hold up the process. We, we are now here at hopefully the final portion of the hearing on the 40R, and we are prepared to move to close the public hearing, but before we, we did, we wanted to work with Beta to formulate a couple of conditions that certainly were within their purview and our agreement, and how we could move forward with a decision with some functional conditions for this complicated project. So I'm going to let Bill take it from here, and then hopefully, when we've reached that point, you can determine whether there are any other questions left open for the board's consideration. If not, then I'm sure we'll assent to closing the public hearing. Bill?
Thank you, Jim, yes, as, as Jim mentioned, we worked with Brian Kuchar from Horsley Witten to respond to the, the comments from, from the Beta Group. I think we, and Brian can, can provide probably a little bit more detail, but we addressed all of the comments with the, and agreed to, I believe, five conditions that would apply to the project, you know, mostly relating to some additional approvals that would occur during construction, but, but I think that we're all in agreement on, on those conditions between our team and with, with the Beta Group, and believe that with that, everything has been closed out from the peer review side. Brian, is that correct?
Yes, that is my understanding, Bill.
Great.
Okay, great, so you, you, Mr. Burke, Attorney Burke, you alluded to some, some other conditions or things that you thought might still be yet unresolved, did I understand that correctly?
No, I actually, I think Brian, you either have formulated with a letter from Beta or from us, I think there are five conditions that we think lead to the final questions that Beta had, and Brian, why don't you hop back on and identify the conditions for clarity for the board?
Sure, Jim, yeah, so that is correct. In our discussions and review with Beta, these are conditions that, that they had suggested, and then we had come up with a few more to address some of their, their comments. I'll just read them right now. The first condition would be that the roof drains be shown on the final as-built plan once construction is. plan once construction is done. Um, the second condition is the verification that adequate depth to groundwater is provided beneath the bio retention area of number one prior to construction. The final, uh, the third condition is the final signed, uh, completed stormwater pollution prevention plan or SWIP be provided to and approved by the city prior to the start of construction. The fourth condition is an additional PVC monitoring pipe be installed in the location of infiltration basin one to verify that adequate depth to groundwater is provided prior to construction. And the last and fifth condition is an agent of the city is to observe native soils after excavation for infiltration systems to verify design assumptions for soil texture and separation to groundwater elevations.
All right. So it sounds like, it sounds like Beta's concerns and the plan, the concerns that the planning board gave rise to at the last meeting have been addressed. Uh, any other comments on the part of the, the board members? Okay, so I think, I think we're up to speed with those items. Um, Mr. May, you and I discussed briefly about um, you know, the concept of the set aside and I think, I think attorney, I mean, uh, Councilor Nick Castro uh, outlined for us at the last meeting what that, what those monies were for and so forth. And I think I was under misunderstanding that that bulk of money was going to go to the detriment of the, of the project once it was built, but that's going to the city. So.
Uh, yes, if, if I could address that question, the money that Councilor Nick Castro was talking about, a hundred thousand dollars is money from the state for our participation in the smart growth zoning program. It is not money from the developer for mitigation. Um, the developer has proposed to add to that pot. Um, in their communications, which has been shared with the board, they are proposing to uh, sub, uh, provide an additional five thousand dollars uh, for potential off-site mitigation. And um, and you remember from our conversation this morning, or this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, um, we didn't think five thousand dollars bought a whole heck of a lot.
No, it doesn't.
But um, as you saw from the plans that have been submitted, uh, the applicant has addressed the play area that um, Tony Gonzalez has, Gonzalez has talked about. Um, and um, the board has discussed and, and uh, thought needed in the project. So um, the money then that was going to be set aside for playground is is being used there by, by their improvement. So um, the question is, how much should we have available for off-site mitigation should uh, the issue arise? Um, you and I talked potentially about a, a bond that um, uh, two years after the certificate of occupancy is issued, if that money is not needed, it would go back to the developer. Um, and, and that is um, uh, one of the options that, that you'd have as a board to discuss.
And what, what dollar, what dollar amount, what monetary amount did we have in mind?
Uh, you and I talked about thirty thousand dollars as a bond. Um, but again, that's up to the board to discuss, but that money should be used before the state money that is currently set aside.
And again, to be clear, if that money, that thirty thousand dollars set aside, uh, is that, is that strictly limited to, 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 to site improvement? Is that what we're saying?
I think it would be off-site improvement, traffic mitigation.
Oh, I see. Okay.
As opposed to other uh, you know, park or open space or recreational activities.
All right, comments from the part of the board on this concept?
I, I like it. I'm in agreement.
Uh, any comments on the part of the developer or through, through their council? Any comments, Mr. Burke, Attorney Burke on Mr. Grogan?
I certainly yield to Bill Grogan. Uh, i- in terms of the, the bond, it, it doesn't have to be a cash bond, I assume. It could be a fidelity bond. Uh, and in terms of the utilization, uh, I, I, it would be under the supervision of uh, probably someone like Mr. May to make sure that we, we have some uh, commonality and understanding of what the use is and that it's uh, related to the project area rather than something that might be outside of the project area.
I, I would include the DPW commissioner in that also.
But he always sounds good to us. But that's Mr. Grogan's call.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think we're certainly o- open to that. I think the, you know, we obviously want to make sure that, uh, you know, if there are mitigation measures that need to uh, occur, I think, as we outlined in the uh, the memo that was prepared by Van Ass that we're prepared to undertake those. I think we obviously just want to make sure there's an opportunity for us to, you know, to, to review and evaluate uh, those. And so that, you know, there's an open process and dialogue to really determine what those uh, impacts are and so that we can reach agreement that, yes, these are impacts and yes, these, you know, do necessitate uh, the use of some measures to be put in place.
All right. All right, it sounds like we are. We have an agreement, I guess, in the concept. Um, again, any other comments or concerns on the part of the board? Uh, I want to, would you help with the language, assuming that someone's going to make a, a motion to go forward with the project, Mr. May? The portion of the, the portion of the motion that wants to, that wants to acknowledge the thirty thousand dollar bond, I don't want to misspeak. Would you assist with the language for that portion of the motion?
Um, I would say that, that we, we would move that we um, approve the plan uh, before us. Um, incorporating the five conditions from the um, Beta report. And uh, that a bond of thirty thousand dollars be held by the city to make necessary off-site traffic improvement with um, in coordination with the developer. And should those funds not be used, the bond shall be returned.
You know, would you, what timeframe did you put on it, Mr. May?
Two years.
Within three years of the last certificate.
Of the CFO, yes.
Well, that was a lot for any member to uh, to grasp, but would someone like to take a crack at that motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the plan. Incorporating the five.
Tony, can I just ask, ask you also, when you approve this, it's the special conditions from Beta and the standard City of Brockton conditions.
Sorry.
I got it. Wait a minute.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the plan before us incorporating the five conditions from Beta, the standard conditions from the City of Brockton. Um, also, the bond of thirty thousand held by the city to work with the traffic, off-site traffic improvements with the developer. If not used within two years, return to the developer.
After the last certificate of occupancy is issued.
The last certificate of occupancy is issued.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Motion, I mean, on the roll call vote. Um, and I'm.
And, and just FYI, Mr. Sweeney cannot vote on this one. And you need all four of the other board members voting in the affirmative.
Right, Mr. Sweeney is our new member, so he has not been a party to all of these negotiations. I understand that. So on the roll call. Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
Reggie Thomas.
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. So it looks like we have an agreement. It's been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been a long road, but we appreciate all the work the uh, planning board has done along with the Councilor Nick Castro and Thompson.
Yep, and thank you for your patience and your indulgence. We really, really appreciate professionalism. You're collectively quite a quite a developmental, developmental team that we don't see that often. So thank you to all of you gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. So, uh, again, back on schedule, the first, the first item withdrawn five ninety-eight, that was returned to ZBA five ninety-eight Offspring Street. Second agenda item was a permission returned to ZBA. That's sixty-eight to seventy Field Street. Uh, that has been continued to, that was Marie Lorch, Lorch Cat, that's been continued to the fourth. The third agenda item is permission to the return to ZBA sixteen Albert Avenue. Uh, the denial was uh, uh, November the tenth, twenty twenty, Nelson Montero. Um, good evening. Are those representatives on?
Nelson, is your attorney there?
Yes, she is.
Um, can you identify her, please? I have a razor hand or something?
Uh, I can tell that our name is Sylvia Katzenes. I mean, we're, we're in different locations.
Right, but we can see who's logged in and.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to raise.
Oh, I got her. Never mind, I see her.
You found her?
I just.
Wait a minute, where'd she just go?
I just, I just.
Yeah, she's on, I see her on.
There, she's been moved.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Uh, would the two of you be able to un, or turn your video on? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we're set.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May. All right, good evening. Uh, petitioners, uh, counsel, if you wanted to give us, we're, we're in receipt of all of the documentation that was sent in. If you want to just give us a brief overview, that would be appreciated. Just a, just a brief overview and then we have, we have some comments. You're muted right now, man.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name again is Sylvia Katzenes and I represent Zubia LLC, the owner of the property sixteen Albert Avenue. Um, last October, Mr. Montero, the manager of the LLC filed a petition with the Brockton zoning board of appeals for variance to convert sixteen Albert Avenue from a single to a two-family residence. Uh, that decision, uh, there was a hearing on November tenth, as the board is aware, at which time, uh, the petition was denied. Zubia timely filed an appeal with the uh, Plymouth Superior Court, which is presently pending. And I do emphasize that, um, we're reserving our rights under that appeal um, and still maintaining that section sixteen of chapter forty-eight does not apply here tonight. However, uh, in, we do, uh, if we do have a rehearing before the ZBA while the appeal is pending, uh, that might be, give us an opportunity to resolve uh, the outstanding issues and dismiss the appeal. So having said that, um, I proceed with the merits.
Could you, not to interrupt you, but could you tell me what the essence, just briefly, what the essence of chapter sixteen forty-eight is, please?
Uh, yeah, sixteen, section sixteen, that provides, that in essence puts somebody in the penalty box for two years uh, following an unfavorable decision by somebody like the, the ZBA. That they cannot uh, go back to the ZBA without first going through, in this case, the planning board.
Yes.
Getting uh, I, 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 I think you uh, understand what, what that is.
We're aware of that. I thought it, I thought it was tied to the, to the superior courts. I thought section sixteen was tied to the superior court's appeal action.
Well, in a way it is because uh, section sixteen applies only to a final unfavorable, but unfavorable decision.
I see.
And given the pending action, the, the appeal, uh, that decision from the ZBA is technically not final. Um, however, uh, again, I say that uh, if we were to get back before the ZBA, I think we can um, uh, overcome some of the hurdles uh, that were there to begin with.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Um, so, um, the ZBA question, in this decision, the ZBA questioned the number of bedrooms in the proposed conversion. Uh, the original plans showed a total of eleven bedrooms. And in response to that concern, uh, Mr. Montero has revised the plans, reducing the number of bedrooms from eleven to eight for the two units now. We're talking about two units. So that would be four bedrooms per apartment, which is certainly not unreasonable or excessive. Also, the ZBA raised an issue regarding the height of the structure once it has been um, amended. And uh, on the original plans, it showed the height as being as thirty-seven feet. The zoning limits the height to thirty-five feet. So in the revised plans that are before the board, uh, we have lowered the height to thirty-five feet so that it does comply with the zoning. Also, um, although the, the board did not specifically address this in its decision, uh, there were two large rooms uh, that were going to be put in the attic. In other words, part of the attic was going to be finished. And uh, those rooms are labeled as bonus rooms on, on the plans before you. Uh, one of the rooms was seventeen feet by twenty-four feet and the other was fifteen feet by twenty-four feet. So, so we're talking about approximately seven hundred and seventy square feet. Um, Zubia has eliminated those rooms, so, so the attic will not be finished. So, uh, the applicant has made substantial changes to the plans that were denied by the, the ZBA. Uh, also, the ZBA found that there was um, uh, that the petitioner had not shown hardship. And and although that they made that finding, there is in fact hardship and that hardship arises from out of the uh, circumstances relating to the structure of the house. The original portion of the house was built around nineteen twenty and it's a um, uh, classic colonial design. It's two stories with a basement and an attic, has a pitch roof. And subsequently, uh, years ago, uh, one of the prior owners added an addition to the back of the house. That addition is a single-story unit with a flat roof and it's built on a slab. There is no basement under there. Still later, somebody else added a second addition. They put that on the back of the, the first addition. That addition is one and a half stories high. And again, it sits on a slab. There's no basement beneath it. And to make matters worse, and I'll get to it in a minute, the two slabs are in different levels. There's three to four feet difference between the two of them. So, um, and, and I'll get to it in a minute, how that, that difference in, in the levels causes a real problem. The original portion of the house, it's heated by gas and um, and that gas heat extends to a portion of the first addition, but not the entire first addition. And the reason is that they cannot extend the gas lines underneath the slabs to heat the, the, the remainder of the first addition and the entire second addition.
Counsel, I don't mean to, unfortunately, we missed, I don't know, speaking for myself, we, I missed a good portion of your presentation. I'm sorry. Uh, I don't know if anybody else did. I, I, I lost, I dropped out when you, when you were explaining how he had modified the, the plans from the eleven to the eight bedroom. I, I, did anybody else miss any of that?
Well, I.
No, no. No, I think you're the only one, Bob.
Then proceed, I'm familiar enough with it, so.
All right, okay. So now, the, the original portion of the house is heated with gas. And however, the rest of the house, it's, that's built on the slab, is heated by electric, electricity. And needless to say, electricity is pretty costly and not all that efficient. So the occupants are constantly complaining that the house is too cold in the winter and too hot in the summer. It's also, there's also air conditioning there. So, so what Mr. Montero would like to do is replace that old heating system and the old conditioner with gas. And in order to do that, he would have to put a second story over the first story addition and, and then an attic over that. So doing that, that way he can run the pipes from the basement, run the, the, the gas line from the basement up to the attic, run it across the attic, and down to the slab portions of the house. And also, what he would do is put new air conditioning, the air conditioning apparatus in the attic. However, adding a second story and the attic is going to cost between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And that just is economically unfeasible for a single-family home. So that is, a literal enforcement of the zoning laws would cost him a financial hardship. And that's why we request the variance.
Okay. Are you, all right, thank you. All right, I have a couple of concerns. As we know, generally, the hardships, chapter forty-eight, section six, I think it is, it has to do with land shape, soils, and topography, and in a literal, a literal enforcement, I mean, he's able to use the property. It's not like he's not able to use the property. He's able to use the property. All, all of the things that you've mentioned are certainly challenges to the property, but those are, those are hardships that I'm not sure that, well, I don't want to speak for the zoning, but those are not hardships that the, that the, that the zoning board would generally take into consideration when considering such a large development on, in an R one C, single-family zone. You, 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 one of the, one of the things that the, I read the zoning board's decision, and one of the things that they, that they highlighted was that the grant of a variance would derogate from the intent of the zoning as it applies to that neighborhood. So I began to get curious, how many homes, if any, in that neighborhood are of a multifamily nature? You're asking for relief from the zoning board of appeals to make this into a rather large, not a two-family, but a rather large, when you have a total of eight bedrooms, a rather large two-family home in what is a single-family zone, and I can't tell. I'll, I'll be quite frank with you, I, I don't think that your plot plan helps your cause at all, because it doesn't, it doesn't tell me anything about what's going on in the grand neighborhood. I don't know how close the house on the left-hand side is. I, I don't know, there's nothing that your plot plan tells me about what's going on in the grand neighborhood. Not when you want, not when your proposal is asking to change a single-family lot into, into, into a two-family. I mean, your, your hardship's notwithstanding. The other concerns I've got is that when you put this proposed addition, you also need relief from minimum side yard. You're in a single-family zone, R one C. You need minimum fifteen foot on side yard. You haven't mentioned that. You would be violating zoning in two places, the side yard, the dimensional zoning. The other concern I've got is the city records show in your brief states that the, that the house, that the lot that the house is on is some sixty-seven hundred feet. So that would suggest to me that, does, does the applicant actually own, does he have title to the two properties?
He does.
Okay, are they in the same name of ownership?
I believe they are, but in any event, he, he does have control over both properties.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, what did we look at there, Mr. May? Did we look at the fact that he doesn't, it doesn't, they're not in the, either not in the same name or they're I mean, it's an inconsistency that if I was sitting on the board of appeals on this case, those are the concerns that I would have.
The concern that we discussed this afternoon is that they are two existing lots of record, and the, the vacant lot could be sold off and, and developed, leaving very little space for the other two families. And you had recommended that they be combined.
Yes, well, they need to be combined, because you're going to need, because if you don't, if you don't combine them to start with, you're going to exceed, you're going to need a lot of relief from this thing. You're going, if you don't combine those lots and that, and that, and that addition lives on this tiny lot, the other thing you're going to need relief from is maximum lot coverage. You're, you're going to grossly exceed maximum lot coverage. So you need, you need to combine the two lots, and, and in my opinion, you need to show in a general sort of a way what's going on in the neighborhood, so that we as a planning board and the members of the zoning board of appeals can get a little bit more comfortable with the fact that your proposal, if it's granted, doesn't derogate from the intent of the zoning as it was, as it applies to that neighborhood.
I would like to.
Those are my concerns, but let me open up to the, the other members of the planning board. Do you have any other concerns, board members?
Can we ask the applicant? I, I'm pretty sure he, from what I'm seeing, as far as the assessors is concerned, is that both lots are under the same ownership. Don't know if that helped you, Bob, but I, I believe that owns both lots. I, I don't think there would be any intent to try to sell that off. It's just noted as an accessory land, piece of land. I don't think you can do anything else with it, but maybe the applicant can speak to that, or his attorney.
Nelson, do you want to take that?
I'd like to answer a question that you raised earlier, Mr. Pelagi, about the neighborhood, about there are other multifamilies in, in the area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the area, if you've been there.
No, I haven't, and, and I, and I, I'm supposed to, if I'm looking this, either, either as a member of the zoning board or member of the planning board, I'm sup, I'm supposed to, when you're proposing something like changing the use in the district, I mean, it's helpful to give the voting member sort of an idea or the flavor of what's going on in the neighborhood, and, and your, your plot plan or site plan falls woefully short of doing that.
Well, just to fill in a little bit, the house directly across the street is a two-family house.
How do I know that?
You can look it up in city records.
I shouldn't have to look it up, Mr. Montero. I got enough stuff to do. That's, you, that's, that's your obligation. You're the one that, you're the petitioner. You're the one that's presenting the project. I don't need a home, I don't need a homework assignment.
Well, let me, let me tell you a little bit more about, I mean, if you look at Court Street and Center Street, all around the places, you got multifamily homes.
Okay, fair enough, but I don't know that.
And, well, I, I'm surprised that you don't know that.
I'm not supposed to know that.
I'm surprised, I am surprised that you're in the city planning office, and you do not know that information.
Excuse, excuse me, can I, can we get a little respect here? Calm down, please be respectful, Mr. Montero, thank you.
Well, I mean, listen, I, I, I mean, I'm not raising my voice, am I?
No, but you're, you're, you're being, you're being a condescending, and we need to avoid that, please, so.
Well, 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 he's condescending too. He's telling me that I should be doing that homework. You should be doing your homework.
All right, well.
If I may interject, I, I do call to the board's attention that there were several letters of approval for this project from the neighbors. That, that goes to show that this is not going to derogate from, from the neighborhood, but it's going to be, it's going to enhance the neighborhood. What's on there now, quite frankly, is a monstrosity. And, and what Mr. Montero is trying to do is make it into a much more attractive building. And the neighbors see that, that, that they, they can appreciate that. It's also going to provide, you know, a much-needed housing to, to a family. So, so there are a lot of advantages for, for what we're asking here.
Well, I would like to see, myself, I would like to see a plan that, that represents what, what is going on in the neighborhood. That's not unusual. I mean, that, that's what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you is not unusual.
Mr. Pelagi, I'd just like to add one, one more thing, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So that you know, the building that we're proposing, we're not changing the footprint of the building at all. You, you said something about whatever's to the side, the fifteen feet, we're not changing the footprint of the building at all, we're just going up on it.
That's right, but you're making, you can't do that, your, as your attorney can probably tell you. The original building footprint is, is, is grandfathered, but when you, when you put something today, you, you can't make, you can't make a non-conforming situation more non-conforming, and that's what you're doing by putting a second addition. You can't do that. You would need, you need relief from side yard setback, which you didn't ask for. And if you don't combine the two lots, you need relief from lot coverage, although I don't, I don't know that you own the two lots, so you're telling me that you do, so. I, I think you're, I think your proposal, I'm not going to say your proposal is a bad one. I think that your, I think that your documents are weak, that's all. I think your documents are lacking.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I gave you guys everything you asked me for the hearing. If, if you had asked me for more things, I would have been more than happy to provide anything else you needed. But what you asked, I provided. And I'm not sure about this conforming, but I don't see why I need more relief if I'm going over on the existing footprint.
Okay, well, I, I don't want to spend too much more time with that. The minimum side yard in an R one C is fifteen feet. You're proposing a second story at seven and a half feet.
I'm sorry?
You're proposing a second story at, at seven and a half foot offset, and you're making a more, you're making the non-conforming use more non-conforming.
I'm sorry, but I'm not following you. If I, if I'm going on top of the, what's existing there already, how is that changing anything? I'm going up, not to the, not sideways.
But that's right, but you can't, but you can't enter into that space unless you get relief from side yard. Your, your attorney, I think, can explain that to you at another time. Did, did any of the board, board members have any comments? What I would like to see, what I would like to see is, I'd like to see the two lots combined into a plan. And I would like to see, I would like to see the area, just the general area. I'm, I'm not talking about doing a whole neighborhood survey. I would like to see just the immediate, maybe one or two properties, just, just some sort of an explanation. One or two properties on either side, and maybe to the rear, what, what the general use is, if this whole area is R one C, that's what I would like to see, but.
So would you like some pictures, a video? What would that do? What, what, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, I would like to see a more comprehensive site plan, a more comprehensive plan that, that helps this board, and that will help the, and that will help the zoning board of appeals make a decision, because I'm sure you have a copy of the zoning board's decision, and they listed a number of concerns that they had. One of which was that the, that the dwelling, if it was approved, would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws in an R one C zone. So you did take care of the height, I appreciate that, and then you did, I don't, I can't speak to the zoning board, you had, you were looking for eleven bedrooms, and you reduced that to eight? I, I don't know, I can't speak to the zoning board, but I would like to see. They also said that you didn't have, that you didn't demonstrate a hardship, a hardship that's, that's described in chapter forty-eight, I think it's six. Maybe six or ten, I think it's chapter six. But, and you, and the hardships that I heard tonight, with all due respect, are not hardships that you would base a, a variance on, but.
If I may, if I may be heard on that point, a hardship also pertains to the structure. It's not limited to, to the soil, to the land. The, the, the chapter very, the section very specifically relates to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or to top, fog, topography of such land or structures. So it can vary, those, the hardship can very well arise from the structure itself, not from the land.
Okay.
That is the new one on me.
Yeah, I didn't see that. I didn't, that's, I've never heard that one.
I think most of the cases that come up do involve the land, but, but that, but the word structure is, is very prominent in this, in this section.
Well, that, that would remain to be, what I would like to see is, I'd still like to see a general, a general concept of what's going on in the, in the neighborhood. Certainly, certainly, I don't know if the house to the immediately left of this is, because it's an old building and it's a grandfathered building, I don't know if it's right up against that property line, I have no idea. So I think we've worked this enough. I, I'd like to ask someone to, if there's no other discussion on the part of the board, I would like to see a more expansive site plan. I think it would be beneficial to us. I think it would be beneficial for the zoning board to, to make a decision. I think, myself personally, I think there was a, a few issues that they did address, but I don't, I think that there was a, a, a few of the issues here that have yet to be addressed, but for myself, I'd like to see a little bit more explanation in the part of a, a an engineer or a surveyor's site plan as to the, the location of the buildings in the immediate area, and, and how they're being used.
I, I would agree with that, and to combine those two lots.
I think that's key. That's, it may be in the same ownership with those two, and how would you do that? You, you, you draw a Form A plan, or you're actually, I guess you could do it with, I think you could do it with eighty-one X. Although you can't, I don't know, but maybe you can't, because you've got the internal lot line there. Yeah, you'd have to do a Form A, I think. And those are not, those are not excessive requests by any means. So you'd need, you would need to combine those two lots on the, using, utilizing a plan, a recorded plan to make them into one lot, record that, and then, and then show, just to, just to be a little bit more expansive about what's going on in the general neighborhood.
So do we
You would, you would continue this?
I think you could continue it, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
If the board was to undertake Mr. Pelagi's recommendation.
Any public comments on this? Is a return to ZBA?
Yeah. That's right, too. Is there any, do we have anybody that wants to be heard, Rob?
Hang on, Mr. Chairman. If anybody would like to address the board on this issue, please signify by using the raise hand emoji at the bottom of your screen. If you hover over the bottom of the screen, you'll see the menu bar pop up. And I am not seeing anyone raising their hands, Mr. Pelagi.
All right, thank you. All right, well, hearing none, if someone wants to make a motion, I, I shared my comments. If anybody else has any other comments, I would like to make a motion. So be it.
So I'll make a motion to continue this to see a more comprehensive site plan of the area, and for the petitioner to consider combining those two lots.
Yeah, we'd need to combine those on a Form A plan and record the plan.
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
No, seconded, somebody has seconded.
Second. Second.
Now it's seconded.
Okay. All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Thank you, thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is.
It's the amendment five eighty-six Montello.
All right, thank you.
Is it just Scott, or is there anybody else joining Scott?
I believe it is just me, Mr. May.
Oh, poor you. Oh, poor you.
It's uh, Mr. Farrier.
Good evening, Mr. Palagi. Uh good evening, board members. Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering, representing Gen Three Rail T LLC uh property at five eighty uh five sixty-eight Montello Street, the Nicoli Oil uh property. We had a site plan before you folks last March that was approved. And uh the site plan had a sixty by one hundred twenty-foot warehouse building and a sixty by sixty office building. Uh during construction, the Nicolis decided that the sixty by sixty office building was bigger than they really needed, and they decided to go with a thirty by sixty office building. In doing that, we were also able to eliminate one of the three entrances curb cuts that we had out onto Montello Street, so we eliminated what was proposed to be the middle curb cut. Uh it just went straight across the parking lot, added some green space as opposed to the the twenty-four-foot uh opening. The issue that we have is, there's no method uh in the planning board regulations for an amended plan uh or or any kind of a administrative approval, even though it's such, it's a minor change and actually a reduction in scope. We still had to file for this amendment uh to you folks to have you approve the the change in plan, so. Uh again, it it's two small changes, both of which kind of decrease the uh the footprint and the impervious uh footprint on the property.
All right. Um thank you, Mr. Farrier. Any any comments on the part of the board? Any comments on the part of planning department? I think it was just a very minor change. Public hearing, so is there any anybody uh want want to be heard there, Mr. May?
Uh if anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. So you can be recognized, and I have not had anyone raise their hand.
Wonderful. All right, we'll close that portion of the hearing. All right, if there's no uh no other comments or concerns, I don't have any concerns or um issues with this, so if someone would like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the site plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the site plan.
If I second Montello, second please.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Uh vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes. Thank you, Mr. Farrier.
Thanks, folks. See you soon.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item, site plan approval, nine forty-four uh Warren Avenue, residential units at ET Engineering.
Azu, is anybody else with you? Is your client there?
Uh yes. Yes, I am here with my client, uh Steve Torrey.
Oh, he's with you, okay.
Yes, uh that's why we're both wearing masks.
I can only see you.
Really?
Oh, there he is. Hi, Steve.
And uh I'm not sure if uh Attorney McCloskey will be able to join. Uh he was not feeling very well, and so he had.
Um I don't see him on, so.
Um so basically um good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening. Uh basically, this is a site plan for construction of a uh building, uh three-unit uh building on an existing land. And uh we went through a tech review uh last month, and um and uh we uh received certain comments uh through the tech review process. And we addressed those, and we submitted a correspondence uh that addressed the comments that we received. And uh we've uh we have a onsite water. We're actually proposing a hydrant. Uh so while so uh one-way circulation, one-way entrance, and a one-way exit. Uh through the project, we have uh adequate drainage. And we have an adequate onsite parking. And so we are looking that uh to uh receive your blessing so that uh we can go to work before contractors get too busy. And um that is the extent of uh my discussion, Mr. Chairman. If you, uh thank you, Bob, uh Rob, for sharing uh you're a good man. Makes our life a lot easier. So as you can see, the blue fruit, uh the blue um highlight shows the proposed um uh three-unit building. And then in in a little bit dark gray color is the parking area along with the drainage. And um on the southeast, on the southeast side of that, but Rob, if you can go, yeah. On the south, southerly end of the project uh will be exit uh exit only. And then where you have that little peninsula halfway in the middle of the property and next to the button line where we have the store, how uh on the left right there will be the entrance only. Um one of the comments that we received was, we had proposed the uh dumpster right about halfway on the easterly line of the property. Uh right where uh it says, next to where we have the zoning data. Um and uh the Board of Health and the Fire Department made some comments to that effect. And so we have relocated that to the southeast corner of the property. And um and uh we think uh we have a clean descent project, and we'd like uh your um acquiescence in approving and accepting the site plan.
I uh thank you, Azu. I had one question for you. Um so, Rob, could you drop the screen down a little bit so I can see the top more than I'll, okay. Uh what during the construction, Azu, wh- where are you, where are you? Your construction support vehicles, where are they coming in and out of?
So they're gonna come in, Mr. Chairman, on the uh, if you wear that, it's a little dimple on the property. Where it's all like a U shape to your, yeah, right there.
Yes.
It's gonna be our entrance.
Okay, that's fair enough. The only thing, the only thing that I saw when I reviewed this, Azu, is that, is that especially on Warren Avenue, you need a stabilized construction exit, and you you desperately need one there, and I don't see one. Um I think it maybe it's just an oversight, but you should have one of that in the detail on the plan. Do you have it on there, but I don't see it? I'm sorry.
Uh can I, may 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 uh may I ask you to repeat what you just said, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, a a stabilized construction exit during construction. You you desperately need that.
So so the area that we have are the entrance and the exit from the property. Those are paved, Mr. Chairman. Those are stable, stable surfaces. When I'm talking, there's not gonna be any excavation at the entrance or the exit.
Oh, I see. So if the does, is that length, I I can only ask you then. So obviously, the area where the proposed building is going, is going to be disturbed area, but when the trucks or the vehicles get on to that that stretch of paved uh surface as you're as you're as you're referring, is that enough to clean the clean the vehicle, the uh the 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 tires of the vehicles, Azu?
Yes, sir, because you're talking of a an a length, a distance of more than a hundred feet that are traveling southerly and then turning uh westerly to ex uh uh westerly to exit. So that's over, that's over at least two hundred feet.
Okay, because if there's any tracking, I'm sure you'll know that, you know, if there's any significant tracking, I mean, I'm 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 sure that'll get the attention of GPW, but that was the only.
I don't expect that, Mr. Chairman, for the simple reason, if you look at my uh, if you look at the test fit data, uh the material there is very gran, very granular.
Okay.
Unlike our, if you, if we had a lot of silt, lummy material.
Yes, it would track, it would track more, yes.
Exactly, but the the material that I uh observed is very granular and coarse. So you're not gonna get that type of uh tracking, but uh Mr. Terry has done an incredible job in the in the city of champions, and I think uh he would have uh, he 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 builds very clean projects. And uh and if that, if that were to be a concern during construction, he would uh move very quickly to address that. I can uh.
Well, I think, thank you for that explanation. Uh do any of the board members have any concerns or questions?
I don't have any questions. It looks pretty good to me.
All right, uh, Rob, do you have anybody that wants to speak?
Uh excuse me, um, Mr. Chair, Azu. I see something about um planning and economic development, wanting you to keep the existing entrance and exits so you don't confuse the neighbors. Did you agree to that or change that, or?
Okay, okay.
That's what, that's what they want.
We've, that's what I want, but here is the uh, in terms of traffic operations. We have a store. It makes more sense. Uh, Rob, if you wouldn't mind uh bringing that point. Okay, so if you look at a, if you look at our right, the abiding land, there is a store right there. That's a building, but yeah, so if you try to exit from in that direction, that blocks your line of sight. You almost have to go all the way into the street to uh see uncoming vehicles. So it makes much more better sense to have that as entry only purely for safety consideration, so that the the southerly driveway that we want to use for exit uh for um exit provides a better line of sight. Uh but if if the preference is to switch them around, we will do that, but I think uh safety, safety auto uh prevail in this instant.
Yeah, that 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 makes sense.
I was gonna say the department can live with that, uh provided that, you know, you you add some more um signage.
Yes.
Uh inside so that the neighbors don't get lost in the middle of the night.
Yes, sir. And we are, we are proposing, we are proposing a couple of signs right where, right near the dumpster. You can see a sign that we have there. And then, and then there were, at the transition between the new construction and the existing, we also have signage there as well.
Okay.
And we propose to uh put a paint, uh there's uh um our plastic uh lining paints on the ground as well, to provide additional, additional, additional visual effect.
Thank you.
Uh any other comments or concerns on the part of the board? I don't think we had anybody in the public arena. Correct, Mr. May?
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this project? If so, please uh indicate by raising your hand uh using the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And I do not see anyone raising their hand, sir.
All right, thank you for that. Um well, I think uh if there are no other, no other qu- questions, comments, or concerns, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve site plan approval, nine forty-four Warren Avenue.
I'll second that motion.
Uh with the condition of adding the signage for the entrance and exit, as Mr. May said.
With the condition of adding the signage.
Thank you for that.
As noted. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, uh vote on the roll call. We have a motion made and seconded to approve, subject to the signage. Vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, uh next is number six, a site plan approval, thirty Inteville Street. It's a mixed-use Jacob Driscoll Engineering.
Wrong engineer.
There he is.
Throw Scott out of there.
Yeah, I moved Greg. I don't know if his client is there, though.
Greg, is your client there?
I'm not sure if he's on or not. It'll be Harrison Bonner.
Yeah, I don't see him, so, okay.
Yeah.
Was he coming on with you, Mr. Driscoll? Or could you feel comfortable proceeding?
Uh I can proceed. Um.
Please do.
If you're on Harrison, go ahead, raise your hands, let them know you're here.
I don't see him, anyone.
Only one person that's not identified, and that's a telephone number, too.
Is it a two-five-two number?
No.
Okay. All righty, so Greg Driscoll, uh Jacob Driscoll Engineering here tonight, uh representing thirty Inteville Bruckton Mass LLC, uh which is Harrison Bonner now like uh with all for um the proposed project that they are are doing over at Inteville Street. So this project, they received a variance in twenty nineteen uh for a use variance um to put residential in the, we see one zone. Um and then, well, this was the previous applicant, and then since then, um we went to tech review. We were on our way to to you guys about a year ago, uh and then the previous applicant decided to go back to zoning again uh to get a variance for adding more units that required a variance from parking. And uh in height for like nine inches. Um so those were both granted. Uh we went back to tech review this past uh November. And we have been through a call com, um closed that meeting hour a few weeks ago. They issued a order of conditions, and now we're before you fine folks. So um what the applicant is looking to do is this uh existing vacant building at thirty Inteville Street, which was previously a buyer or tavern. Um it's been vacant for some time. Um they would like to build an addition off of the back of the building and add a floor to it, so it'll be three stories. And um convert it to residential use. So it'll be five apartments on each floor. Total of fifty apartments in the building. Um and yeah, it's shown right there. Currently, the existing property is most, pretty much all paved. I think Rob's looking to bring up the site plan.
Yeah, I am.
So we're located at thirty Inteville Street, just north the intersection of Am Street. Uh the Shoe City Tavern is located directly south of this building. Um and we are in the neighborhood commercial C one zone. You said it's about twenty-two thousand square feet, and as I mentioned, contains an existing building that is currently unoccupied. And as you can see, if you go up to that last plan, the existing conditions plan, they can see that it's all paved. All that gray is is pavement. And on the next sheet, you'll see the proposed plan, those layout plan. And all that pavement goes away. The the gray shaded area is the new parking lot. All the other areas, um which you see later on on the um landscape plan uh will be all grass and and landscaped and everything. Uh we have a new fence around the area where Rob's current point right now. Uh the the property line goes right up to the abiding building, so they're going to put fence along there, have lawn area, and off the parking lot, those are gonna be patios and um balconies. The new parking lot will be handicap accessible spaces. We have could you zoom in on the um, the zoning table real quick?
On the zoning table?
Yeah. So uh, as I mentioned, uh thirty spaces are required, where we've got a variance up to twenty spaces. Uh there are also Uh, there are also five spaces located out on the street, which while not owned by the building, uh, available for visitors and, and residents of the, uh, of the building, since on-street parking is allowed in the area. Site lighting will be in the form of, uh, wall packs mounted to the building. We did provide a lighting plan and from, from the architect. So currently this site, as I mentioned, is all paved, uh, there is no real, there's no, actually I'll speak to this right now, this is the landscape plan. So this is all the green space that we're adding to the, to the project. Uh, so it reduced runoff by quite a bit, uh, just by adding all that green space. And off the back of the parking lot there where the little back outs areas, that is a stone diaphragm. And then, uh, if you look at the grading plan, you'll, you'll see that there is a vegetated filter strip and a swell. And off the back of a building, there is a infiltration trench, um, to maximize the amount of infiltration coming off the roof. And.
Is that on the sheet?
Uh, that would be on a sheet, I think, three or four. Grading sheet.
Three or four.
That's well, next one will be grading.
There we are.
So we have a stone diaphragm, a five-foot wide sod strip, and vegetated filter strip into, and you see those arrows along there, that's the swell. Uh, to the north of the property, we have a BBW and we got the trout brook, which enters into a box culvert right after the, uh, our property line starts right there. So that's why we had to go to conservation, um, in their buffer. And, uh, beta reviewed it, this project for, for conservation. And we addressed all their comments and concerns regarding the drainage and, and anything else. Let's see, going, uh, coming out of tech review, we had a few comments, um, included this letter with the, uh, response comment letter with the submittal. I can go through those real quick. Mr. Riley from DBW asked to research the size of the existing domestic water line. And add that information to the plans, we determined that was a one and a half inch line. And that was probably too small for a fifteen apartment building. So the plan was revised to show a new two-inch domestic water line. Deputy Chief Edward Williams, uh, from fire noted that most is not allowed up against the building and we're not showing any on the landscape plan for this building. Ms. Raza, I'm saying that right? Uh, stated at the, um, tech review meeting, that the street parking spaces are removed from the plan, which we had done, uh, so we're not accounting for those as any kind of project. Rob May and Deputy Chief Williams noted that the vinyl fence, uh, specifically for the dumpster enclosure previously is flammable. Um, and they asked for more robust dumpster enclosure. So therefore we proposed a heavy wooden fence to be placed as a dumpster enclosure around dumpster. And Brian Creedon, uh, noted that the water, the water connection would be needed and we will need a water permit. Which we will take care of, that's the appropriate time. Received a staff report as well. And I don't think, uh, there was anything outstanding from, from that report. Uh, pretty much is the overall of the project, if there's any specific questions, uh, we're more than happy to address them.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Driscoll. Does any of the board members have any questions or, or thoughts they want to share?
I, I, I love the new design, it's currently, uh, I saw it's gonna enhance that area that's really needed. I think it's a good plan.
I think it is, yeah.
I agree too. I think it's, it's a, we, I've looked at this plan a couple times and, um, I think it's a well-designed plan and I think that neighborhood really needs it, so, um, I, I don't really have any questions.
Uh, do we have, uh, any other comments? Uh, do we have anybody, uh, who's the public? Anybody?
Uh, anybody in the public would like to comment on this project? Please raise your hand so we can recognize you. Again, there is a, uh, raise your hand icon at the bottom of this page. If you allow your mouse to hover, um, over this area.
Mr. Chairman, can may I make a comment?
Yes, please, yes, Chief William.
Just, just on the dumpster enclosure, um, wood will probably burn just as good as plastic. Um, I would recommend, uh, a heavy chain link with slats or, um, have them take a look at the nice, uh, concrete block enclosure that they did at, uh, twenty-four, twenty-seven Pleasant Street, something like that, the one that, uh, Joffrey Anatoli did. It's, that's a beautiful dumpster enclosure and it, it very, uh, attractive to the neighborhood. But just as a suggestion.
Okay, we could certainly, uh, change that on the plan as a condition of approval if there's nothing else that, uh, the board would.
You, you know what that is, Mr. Driscoll? That's the old print shop there across from the fire station, is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And that's just a suggestion, that's not a condition of approval, but it's a, it's a, it's a suggestion. Apparently you're referring to some architectural, uh, block work, I guess.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, there are no, uh, hands up from the public, so you may proceed.
All right, would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve site plan approval thirty Intervale Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second. Uh, vote on the roll call, please. Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
Reggie Thomas.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. All right, Mr. Driscoll, looks like you're all set.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is preliminary subdivision, it's property at fifteen Farrington Street, I think, two lot subdivision, that's JK Holman.
I might have mixed that. No. Um, Phil Nazarela is doing that, I believe.
I'm here as well, Kim.
You are, okay, where did you go? Where did you go? Oh, you're still on, that's why. Okay.
Is Attorney Nazarela representing?
I'm guessing he is.
He is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening, Attorney Nazarela.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, I'm here, um, and I would not be without Mr. Scott Faria. Uh, this is a, uh, piece of property on fifty Farrington Street, whereby we are looking to subdivide the, uh, lot, which is one of the largest lots on that street, approximately three times that of the other developed lots, looking to subdivide it into two equal sections, uh, in being able to build a structure, a residential structure on the one that would be deemed vacant. This is an R two zone. And I believe that, uh, requirement is seventy-five hundred square feet. We, uh, shot at that, we would be proceeding to the zoning board asking for relief. And I think there are, uh, certainly credible reasons that the zoning board, uh, I would like to suggest would consider this favorably once, uh, we have the approval of the, um, the subdivision plan and, or the preliminary plan, uh, that Scott would lay out at this time. Scott, if you want to go over that, then I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll come in after.
Sure. Thank you, Attorney Nazarela. Scott Faria, Home Brand Engineering. Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, as Attorney Nazarela said, uh, a large piece of property about a hundred forty feet of frontage on Farrington. We're just looking to divide it into two, uh, one lot for the existing home at number fifty Farrington. And then the second lot, Lot B, would be for a proposed two-family. Uh, as you can see on the site plan, uh, that Mr. May just brought up, all of the property around us, uh, is a little bit less in area than us. Uh, fifty-five hundred, sixty-eight hundred square feet. And they're all, uh, two-family or larger, uh, residential structures. So our proposal, uh, fits in with the neighborhood in both density and in lot area. Uh, so as Attorney Nazarela said, just looking for preliminary approval tonight. That'll allow us to go to the Board of Appeals. Uh, Attorney Nazarela will make his case at the Board of Appeals and if successful, we'll be back before you folks, uh, in a few months with a definitive plan.
The only thing, Scott, just to be clear, and Attorney Nazarela, the only you need relief from is, uh, i- is what, frontage and area on the one lot or just, yeah, front?
Is, yeah, I, 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 I was, uh, mistaken in the lot area. My zoning by law says five thousand square feet for some reason. Uh, so I assumed I was okay with Lot A having seventy-four hundred square feet, uh, and Lot B having eight thousand. There's enough area, uh, as Attorney Nazarela said, the zoning is seventy-five hundred for a two-family. So, uh, the plan that we submit to the ZBA, I'll revise it to go from seventy-four eighty-eight to seventy-five hundred. So in that case, our, uh, requested relief from the planning board would be the frontage and the width. A hundred feet of frontage required and we have seventy feet.
So that you, I see what you mean, so that you'd, although you're, although, I mean, you're R two, you're an R two zone, but you're used as single family. Um, but I see what you mean, so you could, you could eliminate the request for zoning relief for area by bumping that up to seventy-five?
Right, right. And then, just as a point of order, I guess, the existing structure, uh, is, as you said, in an R two zone, but it is a three-family. So that would need, uh, relief from area to be a three-family. It's an existing three-family home and is assessed as such. So even though we can give it the seventy-five hundred, we'll still be short. I think if then becomes twelve thousand, I believe, if it's a three-family.
Yes.
What about, what about the parking lot? What about the parking lot, Lot A?
They have a, a long driveway that goes off to the left side of the, of the building, Mr. Blodgy. Uh, you know, that they, that they use currently, that they'll continue to use. But I, I, I don't show it on this plan and it's, uh, a good point you're kind of bringing up there, right? I'll certainly show the individual spaces, uh, al- always something the Board of Appeals wants to see, that we have adequate parking. So I'll cer- certainly show that on the ZBA plan and then on the definitive.
And, and to be clear, your house number fifty is an existing three-family?
Exactly.
Yeah, you, you might want to note that on the plan as well.
Yes.
I know you're in a, you're in a multi-family zone, but I think it may serve you to note that on the plan so that.
Agreed. I'll certainly make that addition to the ZBA plan.
Well, what do we, what do we think? Uh, this is a preliminary plan, so it's not a public hearing. I mean, are there enough revisions there that we want to see a revised copy of this? Or what do the board members think? I mean, parking is, parking is a, is a, parking is, especially with a three-family, parking is a, is a major concern. And if you want to alleviate having to go, uh, asking for the relief on your area, I, I, I think you need to make a couple of revisions there. I think it's basically, I like the size of the lots, but I think you, you need to make some revisions there. That's my thought, but board members, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Are, are they allowed to go to zoning with a revised plan? Or do we need to see it prior to, is my question?
You have the ability where the preliminary to, um, pass it on as it exists, deny it, or make comment.
Amend it.
So you can stipulate what you want to see in the definitive plan, then would carry over to the ZBA.
I think the, the example that, we, we did one with you folks back six, maybe more than six months ago on North Carey Street, uh, with a preliminary plan, we showed a common driveway, uh, to service the two lots. You folks approved the preliminary with the condition that if it got to definitive, you'd want to see two separate driveways and, uh, separate services and things like that, so. We would certainly be happy if you could do that in this case, just, uh, to get us, uh, moving to the ZBA.
I'm fine with doing something like that, I don't know if anybody else has comments.
I would agree. I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, so what are the things? So what are the conditions that we're talking about? We want him to demonstrate, he's got a, number one, he's got to label, label the house number fifty as an existing three-family. He's got to show adequate functional parking, parking that works for the three-family. He's going to adjust, apparently adjust the lot line to, to rebalance the lot areas. What were the other concerns?
I think that was it, Mr. Chairman. I think that was it.
I missed the last part of that, Mr. Chair, was we changing the lot lines or?
Yes, he was gonna, he want, he's gonna adjust the areas.
Adjust the areas.
Yep. So that I, if I'm understanding his, he, he's of the belief that he, that will be one less thing he'll be needing for relief from, is that correct, Attorney?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep.
And I, I can also assure you, I think those, uh, those criteria you stated, Mr. Chairman, are reasonable, but I can also assure you, the items number one and two, identification of the, 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 uh, houses being a three-family in parking, uh, closely analyzed and examined by the zoning board when we get there as well.
Sure, certainly, yeah.
Parking is always a very, especially in a street like that, very significant.
Anybody else have any other comments or suggestions? Okay. Uh, who, who's, who's been keeping track of the notes so that they can make them, an effective motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Give it, give it a whirl.
Motion to approve, uh, preliminary subdivision fifty Farrington Street with the conditions that house number fifty will be labeled as an existing three-family, will also show adequate parking and revision of the lot lines. Um, I might be dropping off a little bit here, but I'm pretty close. There might be a few more words I'm looking for here.
Just to adjust the area.
To adjust the area. I don't know if there was anything else.
I have it.
Thank you.
Just lot line and area to rebalance lots.
Just lot line area to rebalance lots.
Okay, if it's, if it's, I'm just, a question, Pam. So if this plan is approved under those conditions, do, do the, does that plan come back to the planning department? Or do you, you not see it again?
No, this has to come back as a definitive. Because this is only a preliminary.
Yes, but I understand, but I think, isn't the, isn't the objective here to get before the, utilizing this adjusted plan to get before?
You go to the zoning board, so.
Carry this to zoning.
It would be in, it would be in the letter to, we would send a letter to the zoning board saying that they, they, you'd like to see these amendments to the plan, so.
Okay. All right, motions, is there, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. So, very good.
Thanks for the help, folks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And, let's see, what have we got here? We have, okay, this is the, this is the definitive subdivision. Let me just get caught up here. All right. So the next agenda item, this is a definitive subdivision. It is an eighteen-lot residential subdivision, uh, and is listed as part of lot ninety-seven Pleasant Street, by W Engineering CLM Development.
I think I've moved all the applicants. Moved Charlie Macy, Evan, and Attorney Burke.
Is there anybody else on your team? Jimmy muted.
I know, uh, we're, we're all set there.
Okay.
Good evening, Attorney Burke.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I guess if your team is here, I guess you have the floor then.
Great, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Plagi. Uh, I thank you for, uh, your assistance and I also think, thank you for your work and professionalism on the planning board. Uh, I have the pleasure to represent, uh, today, Charlie Macy of, uh, CLM Development and Evan Watson, uh, engineer. and Evan Watson, uh engineer, uh with the project known as Amelia Estates. Uh I I became involved in this real estate approximately three years ago when I was asked to assist uh on another adjacent subdivision, uh Cypress uh uh estates that was being presented by Mr. George Carney. The Carney family also owns this real estate, uh and it is uh under agreement with the uh C L M uh for a development of, I believe, roughly eighteen lots. Uh the uniqueness of this particular project, again, goes back uh in that there was a a substantial amount of community uh discussion and and a community outreach before we started to develop this roughly forty one acre site that was owned by the Carney family that extends from Braymore Road uh to uh Cypress uh and ultimately out uh through Chilton uh to uh Pleasant Street. There was a great deal of concern among the existing Ward One counselor and a number of other uh individuals representing the neighbors in the Braymore and uh Cypress area to uh try to prevent this property in being developed as a cut through street that would roughly run from Torrey through to Pleasant Street. So at that time, having taken the uh uh the comments and the suggestion of numerous members of the uh political family of the city of Brockton, we devised the utilization of the property that created roughly three subdivisions. I believe we sat down with the planning department and provided what then was our vision uh on how to accomplish the development of the property while at the same time uh swaging the concerns of a number of the elected officials of the city of Brockton. Toward that end, it was suggested that we would roughly develop three subdivisions. First Cypress that came before you as a preliminary plan, and I believe will shortly be before you as a definitive plan, in which Ed Jacobs is doing the engineering work. Uh that uh was brought before the zoning board of appeals, and we received permission for the subdivision with an area that met like this one does, all of the area requirements of the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton. Plus, at the same time, uh it had some lots that required uh a variance from the hundred and seventy five foot requirement of the zoning ordinance. The next development uh involves this particular parcel in which we are now seeking also to create uh an extension of Westbury, I believe, into uh the eighteen lots, which again will meet the requirements of the uh area width and size of the ordinance. However, there is uh a shortage of uh uh frontage that we will be looking for waivers. We're also uniquely involved in a process, Mr. Chairman, in which I believe the city is changing their perspective and process and how they want to handle these matters. And as a result, we're filing a definitive subdivision, and under the subdivision control law, we're respectfully requesting this board grant relief from the frontage requirement as they are authorized to do under the subdivision control law. Uh we submitted a waiver, uh and I think there's some confusion about that because I I believe uh uh we saw Rice's report earlier today, but I know I I saw a definitive uh waiver or request that went with the the application, and if it somehow got misplaced, we'll be happy to submit it to you. But in that waiver request, among other things, it's requesting this board issue a finding as required under the statute uh that the uh particular subdivision as this, that a waiver of the front requirement and the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. A reduction from one hundred and seventy five feet to one hundred and twenty five feet is requested. That in addition to a couple of other waivers, one of which is the length of the cul-de-sac. Uh there has since arisen, uh since we provided our preliminary materials and submitted uh to the board, some questions now as to the length of this particular cul-de-sac, which may exceed uh the dimensional requirements authorized under our zoning ordinance and revised ordinance of the city of Brockton. Toward that end, uh we had a meeting uh relating to the public safety issues that could arise from that problem. And we were we were pleased to have the assistance and uh I I guess educational assistance of Deputy Chief Williams, uh in which we sat down and discussed some objective possibilities of relieving concerns about public safety matters. That resulted in our developing a plan that Evan will show you, which provides for continuing access, uh the potential for continuing access through Cypress so that there would not be any problems related to emergency vehicles, fire, police, ambulance a- and related. So this is here after we provided notice, uh I guess on a preliminary hearing. I understand that this is going to be, in fact, extended, and we're going to have a another uh form of notice in which the public hearing uh with the public are going to be invited. But today, we're providing you with the information that we have, and we have provided to the planning board and others within the city, and we're looking for your uh assistance and comments. And toward that end, Evan, I'd like you to walk through the subdivision at this time and also identify the characteristics that required you to provide a request for waivers.
Very good. I may, Mr. Chairman, uh like to present my screen. Okay with everybody? Um can everybody see? Let's see, I think I I had the wrong thing. One moment. And we can start with this. Does everybody see this uh Google Earth uh image here?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to familiarize ourselves with the area. Um so we know what we're talking about. This is on the west side of Brockton. You see uh Route twenty four and Route one twenty three Torrey Street. And the site we're talking about is situated in between Pleasant Street and um Braymore and Cypress. So we're right in here. So the.
Does the let me let me let me interject, Mr. Watson. So does this aerial view, does this show the most current developments so that we're as we're looking at it? Does this show everything develop up up into real time?
Um this photograph was taken in October of twenty twenty, and the most recent uh Chilton Road um development is shown here, yes.
Okay.
And then um there's some a recent thing here. So yeah, up until October twenty twenty, that's how current this is.
Very good, thank you.
Um so the the area that we're looking at, as Attorney Burke indicated, is just the uh northern um property here. So this road was constructed originally with a cul-de-sac. However, there was a provision added here that's not in the residential lot to allow access to this property. And this cul-de-sac is actually provided on easement. So we would expect that this road would be extended, or we would have an intersection that would go to the north and would go to the west. I can share.
How do you gain access to that cul-de-sac that's going to lead into that new?
Oh, I can go back. So the access for that, you come off a Pleasant Street and you um come down Chilton. It actually breaks off into two roads, and then we have um the access here. The current owner actually has uh has retained property rights to this road, and he owns this parcel right here. So we're able to to do those modifications to tie in.
Does that answer your question, Tony?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Um I've tried to switch my view to the design plans. Can everybody see the design plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Um so as such, we've prepared a set of um definitive design plans. Uh we've had definitive design subdivision plans, existing conditions plans, drainage profiles and details um to meet your submission requirements. This is the existing plan. Again, we have about seventeen acres we're looking at here. Now let me back up here. So if you look at this property, this shows how Braymore Road ends. Uh Cypress Road comes into the property and Westbury Road comes onto the property. So by right, if we look at the subdivision rules and regulations um and we followed those, the course of action we would likely take would be to take Westbury Road and extend it down to Braymore Road. And we would also likely come up, develop that, and come into Cypress Drive. It's my understanding, and and I was not involved in the prop project at that time, but that this was presented to um the planning board and other agencies of the town um to to illustrate how that would go through. It was worked out that this was uh the best course here. So we divided into twenty lots. Again, if you look at the geometry of uh the lots, we all meet, we have the shape factor, it's indicated on the next sheets, uh where we have the hundred and twenty five foot width for the hundred and feet, hundred feet back. Um we do have a couple lots, and again, because of the narrow geometry of of this section of the property, in order to get enough area, they do come back a little bit oddly shaped. However, those areas um are areas that we're going to be using for drainage. You know, I'll get to that in a moment. So that shouldn't cause any conflict with any of the neighboring parties. Um here's our existing conditions plan. We had the uh photogrammetrist deliver some topography for the site. Um so we have a high point of the site up to the west, and everything essentially drains all the way over to the farm property on the east. There is an existing detention basin that comes off of Westbury, um and there is an existing garage here. And then you can see some test pit symbols. Um Charlie and I went out and we did some test pits to take a look at the soil to make sure we didn't have excessive bedrock or uh unusable soils, and those all came out well. You can see the results of the test pits here. Then we overlay our design. We're able to take the drainage from just our site. Uh the drainage for Westbury Road is taken all into Westbury Road. Um all of our drainage, we're going to be picking up and bringing into a new detention basin here. And that will also take all any of the water that's flowing down the hill as well. The existing detention basin, that's on easement from Westbury Road, uh we'd like to move that closer to the edge of the property and that that size to um basically the same size or larger than what's already there. Again, these are just a little more detailed view showing the the grading of the site. Um and then this indicates the detention bases in easement on both sides that would go to the city. And what's nice about that is some of these areas of the lots that get skinny and relatively unusable, we're able to aggregate those together into the easement areas so that if somebody did put up a fence, they could only put up a fence up to the easement, and you would have, you know, lines of parallel fences running uh in everybody's backyard. The plans and profiles with the piping um all designed. That's these plans. Then we have construction details. Um we did receive a comment to um make some modifications to our uh typical cross sections, which we can easily accommodate. We can do that. Um one notable item, um you'll see that on our plans, we show a pressure sewer lateral in in this device here, a pump chamber. That is because if I go back to the overall plan, the existing sewer manhole is about thirty feet higher than most of the the subdivision than this intersection. So I'm unable to get a gravity sewer to to get there. So we're proposing a a private sewer made of uh pump stations for each individual home that would go to a low-gravity sewer pipe that would then go into the town sewer, city sewer, excuse me. We did meet with the sewer department. Um it was their recommendation that we would put the sewer line, because it was private, under the sidewalk uh to make it easier to maintain versus if it needs to be uh modified and and dig up through the middle of the road. Um of course, that's, you know, that was one of the waivers that um we were looking for on the cross section to modify that cross section. But but that can be put wherever it needs to go for certain. I can bring up the the waiver list. Um so again, streets be no longer than seven hundred feet. So we were hoping to obtain that waiver so that we could make uh response to the neighborhood. Again, this is a relatively unique property on how its its size, its uh shape of its narrowness in some areas, and how it's accessed on three sides, and it's in a, you know, an established neighborhood. And um we asked for a waiver for street lighting. Um again, we were trying to match what we saw on the neighboring um subdivision. Oh, I I don't think you can see my um, I'm sorry. Bring this up. Is the waiver list shown on the screen?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Um so we our intent with most of these waivers was to match the subdivision that came in on the abutting property. So um I didn't see any street lighting there, um so I was asking for that, but certainly we could provide street lighting. Um the sidewalk, the typical cross section shows sidewalk from the roadway all the way to the right-of-way. Um in the neighboring subdivision, it's it's five feet um asphalt, and then it provides a grass strip. We'd still ask, you know, do the granite curving. And then I wasn't sure if um fire alarm boxes, if that was still a thing now that we have cell phones and whatnot. I I haven't seen one of those in a while, but uh certainly if if we want to have uh alarm boxes, we can we can certainly provide that. Um the last thing that I'd like to share with you. Um Attorney Burke indicated that we were working on providing some form of emergency access. So we had a meeting with um representative from the fire department, and we presented to him that we could do an easement at a twenty-foot-wide gravel access road to connect the future uh other projects to Cypress and to Braymore. And what that would do is essentially address the concerns of why we have this requirement for shorter roadways, because if there's some type of problem that blocks the road, an emergency vehicle could get through. Um this, these easements would also serve to extend the water line. Um so that would improve the the water pressure for everybody in that neighborhood essentially. Um and it would be easy to maintain. We'd have a a gravel access road, and we'd have a gate. We think it's something of this style. And, you know, in Brockton, it's something you probably don't see very often. Um, you know, a twenty lots cul-de-sac might not be something that's done all the time. Um I live in Rainham, and, you know, we we have a lot of little subdivisions with cul-de-sacs all over the place. So um this is something that you see on on a dead-end road. So uh we presented some of this information to him. Uh he's taking it under advisement and and reviewing that with uh his colleagues, and we're expecting to hear back from him as to uh viability of of such a access.
Um I was wondering if you could go back and talk a little bit about the um drainage of the site and how the sheet flow is running down uh what is it, uh west to east, but there is also some issue with how it flows towards or if it flows towards Cypress and Braymore.
Very good. So. Very good. So I can certainly do that. Um, if we go to the existing.
Well, that's okay. No, I'm I'm, thank you, Mr. May.
But here's the existing conditions.
Mister Chair, we're about to lose a uh member.
How's that?
He has to go to another meeting.
And who would that be, please?
That would be Reggie, and it is also his last meeting, so.
Oh, is he still on?
Uh, he may have.
I'm sorry.
Are you are you leaving at this time, Reggie?
If I could, yeah, I'm sorry, I have a trustees meeting at eight fifteen.
All right, well, the time is at hand. Well, all right, well, thank you, and thank you for your participation on the planning board. We really appreciate your time and your effort. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Send you guys an email.
Bye, Reggie. Keep in touch.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
May I continue, Mr. Chairman, we're all set? Okay, thank you. No problem. So if we look at this existing conditions plan, this is something that's. Easy for an engineer to read, but it looks like a bunch of squiggly lines for most people, so I'll zoom in a little bit to describe this. Um, each one of these lines represents a one-foot change in elevation. And these are labeled for every foot, so you can see here we're at elevation two hundred and twenty-three. And the flow of water is going to run perpendicular to these lines, so essentially the water is gonna flow down through this way. We have one component of the drainage that does come into the woods to the south. And then the rest of the drainage essentially comes down into the farmland uh to the east. And we did do um. Our roadway will intercept. A lot of the water that actually flows towards the south. And we'll pick it up into the drainage system and bring it into a detention basin, which will slow the. This uh rate of runoff that comes off the site. So what will end up happening is the amount of runoff, the amount of area that drains to that. Is a property to the south will be drastically reduced. And then where we have impervious area being added, we're taking that into our detention basin. I presented that with calculations. We did do the calculations for that um and and show that that all works, and that's.
Does that? Does that answer your question, Mr. May?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Um, okay, and does that does that conclude your presentation at this time, Mr. Watson?
Um, it does for me. I don't know if um Attorney Burke or uh Charlie has anything else to add, but I'd be um.
I'm sure there's a lot more information we'll be providing as this thing rolls along, Mr. Chairman, but I I think that's good enough for tonight.
Yeah, sorry. Well, this was filed, just to be clear, this was filed as a de- a definitive subdivision, was it Pam?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's it's a public hearing and and I'm sure that this because it was that was that habits, it must have been advertised as a public hearing, so. I'm sure there'll be public that want to speak. Um, and as I'm sure that you're aware, I mean, because this is it's it's an ongoing process. Uh, there'll be a lot of discussion, a lot of deliberation, there's gonna be a lot of input. Um, and we we just we were discussed about um outside outside peer review. I I think it's. I think it's my personal feeling, I think everybody benefits from that. Um. Um, outside peer review, I think Mr. May and I spoke briefly about that.
That has begun.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry, pardon me, it has begun.
It has begun. He was very proactive.
Oh, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you for that correction. I wasn't aware that that's already been. So Beta has that?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I think I need to get back in touch with Mr. Macy about some some things, but yes, Beta has started.
Okay, so I I'll kick off the comments. I mean, I I did spend a little time with the plan. Um, so I assume based on the lot. Shape, I think you use the the uh reference, Mr. Watson, some some of the irregular lot shapes. You you're trying to meet or exceed the thirty thirty thousand square feet? Is that what the is that what the goal was?
All of a, yes, all the lots meter exceed thirty thousand square feet.
So that you would only be asking, in theory, you'd only be asking the zoning board for relief from frontage.
Uh, we would like to ask this board for relief from frontage. Uh, maybe, Mr. Burke, you could describe that a little better?
Well, again, uh uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's that's something that I believe the city is in the process of making a change in procedure.
Yeah, it is, it is.
And and that's what we're doing. This is your first trial run. Uh, we're we're providing you a subdivision and we're looking for waiver from frontage.
Yeah, in in the waiver thing is a catch twenty-two in the sense that. Because there's so much deliberation, especially when you get into uh o- outside peer review. On the, there's so much deliberation and contribution to the discussion, as Attorney Burke knows. From the part of the board members, from the part of the community, the abutters, the counselors. We typically wait until probably the end of the process. To make our decision on waiver waivers because of that reason, because there's so much input, discussionary input. In 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 into shaping the the final, the final um. The final decision on the subdivision. So a- and I know from, I've been on that side of it, so I know from a. A design standpoint, you'd like to know as much as you can know upfront, but it's kind of a catch twenty-two, but um. Anyway, those those were the lot shape uh which I. Lot shape, I I think uh, I appreciate you're trying to, you're you're trying to maintain the minimum thirty thousand, but. Um, I I think that the, well, I can't necessarily, want to be careful not to speak for the zoning board of appeals, but it would appear. To me that most recently, the zoning board has been um. Let's say, open or amenable to lots in the hot, in in the twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand range. Um, tho- those lot configurations that you're showing. Um, would would give me some concern. And the other thing is the discussion, the philosophical discussion of. The the length of the road, what constitutes safety, what constitutes access, and the interesting part about that is. Mr. May and I were talking about that today. Every community has a different definition of what is the length of a maximum dead-end street, but. I was a seven hundred nonetheless, so uh that's gonna be part of the discussion process. Do any of the other board members have any, anything else you'd like to add or kick off, I should say, with your concerns or your comments, questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's Larry.
Yes, Larry.
So if um. If a waiver was granted on the roadway that they're looking for. Does that, and it's might actually be a question for um. Chief Williams too, does does that make a difference with public services and all that too?
How do you, how do you mean, you mean, you mean public mean?
Well, so now you're extending the roadway. Um, is this, I mean, it's it's not a cul-de-sac. So there, I mean, it's it's fine for the emergency vehicles to get in there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You're talking about that, you're talking about the emergency dirt dirt exit.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
So your question is, does it, would that, would that facilitate the average?
Right.
Family passenger vehicle, I don't know.
Right, which wouldn't, but we're not looking to use that as a throughway road or a or a cut-through. We're not looking to extend that, right?
They are not.
Okay, all right. Um.
Could you post the drawings, uh, uh, re- re- display the drawings that you just had up there, so?
Sure, sure. Is this drawing good, or would you like to see the?
That that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, so if if I can address the board for just a second. From Pleasant Street to the very end of Westbury is a little over a thousand feet. And then they're going to add another thousand feet of uh dead-end. Uh, to this, to this project or to this this road network, excuse me. So um, on previous subdivisions that have been before the board in the last year, we have had um. Members of elected officials uh concerned about the extension of. Um, roadways that exceed uh seven hundred feet or the extension of of uh dead ends that that. Exceed a couple, seven hundred feet. And the reason is, uh, amongst other things, is is public safety. Now, if a tree, you know, a- and and having these easements in between the two properties or the three properties. Um, could certainly alleviate the concern for emergency vehicles. But um, that then leaves the residents of the area stuck. So if you can see where his hand cursor is right now on the drawing, if a tree were to fall there. On Chilton. All of these houses are now trapped. Uh, waiting for somebody to come out and get out, you know, and and cut down this tree. And that's one of the reasons why we were proposing um that the landowner. Uh, think about creating some sort of interconnection between these uh three subdivisions. Uh, we do not, you know, anticipate that. Um, there is going to be a lot of cut-through traffic, simply because it is such a secure this route to get to. Um, Braymore or Cypress. As opposed to um remaining on on Rockland. So um, we had a meeting with the developer, we we started talking uh about this. Uh, probably a week ago, and that's one of the things that um. Uh, we hope that the board will take under consideration.
So to be, to be clear on your comment or your concern, Mr. May. I- i- is 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 the point of your comment that you'd like to see this a design go out to Braymore? To to make so, to make a secure this route? Is that what you're suggesting?
Um, if if I could share uh my screen briefly. Um, there are three drawings, uh, three subdivisions that are being um considered. Um, let me turn on my annotate. There's the current subdivision that's in front of you right now. There is a uh subdivision off of Cypress, and then a third subdivision proposed. Or at least considered off of Braymore. Um. And what we had suggested that the developer look at is is interconnecting. Rather than, you know, complete dead end. If Braymore then connected to Cypress, Cypress connected to Letty Street, I think is what they're calling it. Um, and then back up to Westbury and out Chilton. It is no longer a straight shot through, kind of like you would find on on Rockland Street. It is a bit of a circuitous route for people to try to drive through here. But if a tree does go down here, I have options now if I own a house back here.
I like that. I mean, I I appreciate what you're what you're alluding to. Um. If it's doable, I I don't know how realistic it is, but I but I take your point about the. Having having the ability to have options to move about the develop.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, uh, the the scenario that Mr. May uh. Uh, artfully is is suggesting, and and certainly I understand it. Uh, but the the key is the public safety access. Of for for fire, health and safety. The inconvenience access could happen at a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac. Isn't any different. I I believe that you're, at least, we're a little bit in the middle of this, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. Because in good faith, we came out and said, how do we do this best for the community? And essentially, the three subdivisions that you're looking at was the answer. And in fact, that was disclosed uh when we first came before the planning board on Cypress for our preliminary. Uh, that was essentially disclosed to the zoning board of appeals when we got approved on the Cypress. Uh, and I can tell you as, and again, we're a little bit in the middle of this. As early as today, there were elected officials of the city of Brockton that were reaffirming. Uh, their their lack of interest of having a cut-through street going from Braymore to Pleasant Pleasant Street. So we're trying to make this work for everybody.
Right, was that in there, in there requesting that? Was that a little, was that, was that bordering on self-serving, Mr. Burke?
I, uh, no, I think it's bordering on what they think was best for the community, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fair enough.
Again, it is at the board's discretion to grant those waivers, not the ZVA.
Uh, no, there's never been any question about that.
Well, Chairman, could I make a comment?
Yes.
I got involved in this a couple of weeks ago. And uh, the city has a seven-hundred-foot length. I found a a study done back in two thousand and four of all our hundred and eighty-one Massachusetts communities. And they ranged, most of them were under a hundred thousand, there were a few that were over a thousand, and I'll uh send Pam a link, maybe she can send that out to people. I also started asking around um why we have the seven hundred. And nobody could give me a definitive answer, but one of the answers which makes sense is we carry eight hundred feet of large diameter hose, we could. Hand stretch it down a street if we had to. And I I think that's the case in most places. Over the past couple of years that I've been um observing this board, we've kind of stretched that seven hundred feet to. Fourteen hundred feet, twelve hundred feet. And I I don't think I've dug deep enough into it. Um, I've started looking a lot of the cul-de-sacs in the city of Brockton. Um, though I think the largest one I found so far is eighteen hundred feet. Um, I'm continuing on. And it is a public safety whether we can get apparatus to the other side of any sort of incident. Um, I met with Mr. Burke and uh Mr. Macy and Mr. Watson and a couple other people yesterday. They proposed this fire department access road, and I'm in the process of um investigating it. I've got calls into the Rainham Fire Chief to talk to him, how he feels about it. One of my concerns is the maintenance of that road and who's gonna take care of it? When we get the twenty-four-inch snowstorm, who's gonna plow it? And right now it will be okay, why Mr. Macy has the project ongoing. But once the homeowner association takes over. How are we gonna be able to enforce them to do that without having to take them to court or do something of that nature? So the access road, although I I'm not a hundred percent against it, um, it it has a lot of um questions to be answered so far. Uh, and both subdivisions, both um. Uh, Amelia Estates and um the one on the other side need to get together and design that together. And I think they both need to make some sort of presentation um together. Because once Mr. Macy starts building, we need that road in place. Uh, the second item that we were very concerned about is twenty-one hundred feet of. Uh, a dead-end water main and how much water we could actually get up to that dead-end water main. And uh, that was a concern. Uh, Mr. Burke and his team um have graciously agreed to. Um, meet up the three proposed subdivisions um with an easement so that. We can connect the water so that we'll have free-flowing water throughout the the area. So that one, I think we we can get um taking care of the water. Um, I'm not sold on the access road yet, but this is the beginning of the process and. Um, we worked diligently to um see what we can come up with.
All right, Chief, thank you. Um, any other board members or or the planning department, any other concerns or? I mean, obviously, that's not something that's gonna get resolved tonight, obviously. Um. I I I for one, I'll be honest and tell you that I wasn't aware that there was a. As Mr. Burke has alluded, he said that this that this thing, we're we're more in the middle of it than in the beginning. Can you bring up that conceptual plan again, the one that chose the? Um, the one that chose the penciled-up three, three subdivisions?
Just, just. That's not my plan, that I think's Rob's.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I had no idea, for example, I'll be right up front and tell you that I had no idea. That this, I guess you'd call this a concept plan. I didn't know if this concept plan was. On the discussion table and that it had gotten any traction. I didn't know that. Can you speak to that, Mr. Burke?
I don't, I don't, I don't know how to describe traction. What 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 I'll suggest to you is that what we did do. Is we laid out options for the community, and one of the options was a a a uh as-of-right. Traditional subdivision that went from Braymore uh with with uh cul-de-sacs off of the main road. Right out to Pleasant Street. That can be done. In fact, I think we would get more lots if that was done. However, that is exactly not what. The representatives of the community that we discussed wanted. I can assure you from my hearing before the planning of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, when I would say roughly about fifty neighbors from Braymore showed up. Uh, and they were finally suggested that no Cypress is a cul-de-sac and is not going to connect to Braymore. Uh, that's about the only time they were quieted a- as the meeting uh, dragged on. So this plan, you're right, is a conceptual plan. Uh, without the interconnections that uh, uh, obviously Rob has identified, he recently added. Uh, that was uh, run by various members of the community as an option. As to what could work uh, in terms of an orderly development, a safe development. And not having the uh, impact on one of the more. Uh, how would you put it? Uh, uh, senior neighborhoods in the community. Uh, throughout that area. And uh, that's that's where we are, and when I say we're in the middle of it, we are. Uh, we're trying to do the best we can to make the best product we can. Uh, and and keeping in mind not only public safety, but the ultimate desires of the uh, what's best for the community. And we we, I think we've stepped up because we gave up lots. In terms of agreeing to pursue uh, the three lot subdivision plan that's before you, or. At least in theory, what's before you.
All right, thank thank you for that expanded explanation, I appreciate that. Uh, okay, well, as we said, it's a it's a it's a work in progress. Um. Do you have anybody at this time? Do you identify anybody, Mr. May, at this time that wants to be on the record?
Um, yes, Mr. John. Kenova, I'm probably butchering your name, but um.
We opening the meeting to public?
Well, it's it's an advertised public hearing, I thought you said it's a definitive subdivision, which was an advertised public hearing. Do we have a choice on that? If I'm if I'm out of order, please tell me, I thought I have thought it was.
The city attorney has ev- has um. Advised against that because of some issues that may exist with the notification.
Oh, sorry, that's right, okay.
And so we were hoping to um, have the applicant present. And then um, ask. Uh, we have staff and board comments that will go back to the applicant to make uh, future revisions. And then we were going to uh, she suggested then. When the newer plan comes out and there is a second notification with some better location information. Um, that uh, we then reopen and uh, take public testimony.
Okay, fair enough, yep, thank you for that. Um, okay, again, are there any other comments uh, from the part of the planning board? You've seen what the proposal is and uh. You've heard the discussions, uh, again, it's an ongoing process.
I I do think we we need to see a second um. Entrance for public safety, for fire trucks, et cetera. But um, I remember, is this the area where there's three houses on Pleasant Street and the development was. Developed behind them and there was water drainage into.
Exactly, yes.
So has all, because this is not my forte, so um, Mr. Chair, it's yours, has the water drainage been addressed so that?
Yes, that issue that that unfortunately came up at that. Planning board meeting, I I know the one you're meeting you're talking about, that was. That was the developer that developed those street front lots lots along Pleasant Street, and he has since addressed those issues. And that's been quieted, yep.
Okay.
Yep, but that's good to your point, this is this development is behind that. It's actually behind the cul-de-sacs that that the engineer outlined is behind that, those three houses.
And could it add to or create further issues for the? Those three houses that are on Pleasant?
Well, is assuming the post-construction runoff is addressed, as Mr. Watson has suggested. I would suggest not, but I mean, that's a question for. Which you'd have to ask, uh, he's not even aware of what we're discussing, but. I assume that he'll, I mean, in development, you have to be held responsible not to negatively impact. An abutting landowner, I mean, that's, he's he's he'll be held to that standard, so.
Okay.
Yep. Well, um, if there's no other comments, concerns, questions, um. And and again, I'm sure we're going to learn more as the as the outside peer review, that would be Beta. Develops his comments and his concerns, the board and the public is going to learn more, so it's a process.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, what probably would work for us if you continue it to a date certain. That uh, provides enough time to do whatever the planning board thinks it needs to do for publication notice.
Certainly, um, yes, and that's publication because it's going to be, it's going to be, but we don't know.
Will we play, will we run the legal? And you're going to have to re-notify a butters.
I've already talked to the city solicitor, and I'm not sure I am, uh, because we provided sufficient notice. Uh, but I'm happy to work that out, I'm happy to provide a regular mailing.
I I believe that was discussed, regular mailing.
Yeah, I I'm happy to do that for the board. Uh, it it it, Mr. Chairman, it it, there was a huge number of uh, of uh, certified mailings uh, that went out. Uh, in this particular process, so.
In the radius of notice, yeah.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, what what we'd like to do is, we'd like it continued to a date certain and then. Uh, you give everybody sufficient time to be able to work around that date.
Sounds good. The question, do we know, can we ballpark, how long, how long is Beta going to take? In in order to have an effective next meeting, I'm I'm going to respectfully suggest that you'd want to have at least something from Beta.
Oh, I I, we want a productive meeting, so I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, right? I mean, if 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 we're talking, it's it's now uh, early April, where if we're talking the 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 middle of May, I think that would be sufficient.
The June meeting?
Because you've just begun your.
Looking at the June meeting?
You've got, you're on, technically, you're on your, it it, does his, Pam, do you know, or Rob, do you know? Does the original filing with the city clerk, does that start his time clock of the one forty-five days?
It does.
It it does, yeah.
Okay, so you're you're only, you've only spent roughly, I think you're stamped in the beginning of. March, so you only spent thirty days.
I'll I'll speak for the client here, and he can shoot me later. Yeah, I think the June meeting is probably makes a lot of sense. It'll give the operative time for Beta to have a detailed analysis and more importantly. By Evan to respond to some of that analysis, so that we may have a revised plan coming into the board for the meeting.
And and realistically, as we all know, you may you may find, you may be in a spot where you may have to ask for a continuance, which is. Pretty much standard.
It's been done before.
It's been done before. Yes, it has. All right, so we we're going to, we have a continuance until June, what is the date of the June meeting, please, Pam?
Uh, June first.
June first, there you go.
Um, I do want to make an announcement, though, that we have uh, some people who have been sending um, Q and A questions. And we've been trying to answer them as we go, and I am trying to figure out how those are saved. Um, because that is not a.
Is it appropriate, Mr. May, to just to put a message out to the general public that? Will be open at the June meeting, it will be open to public comment at the June meeting?
Uh, yes, and I I have notified some people um, that uh. That this will be um, uh, available. Uh, for public comment at that time.
Okay. Well.
This is the, this is the advice of the city solicitor, so. I don't mean to throw her under the bus, but. I just.
For everyone writing these questions and wanting to be heard, you can be heard at that meeting, so. You're not being ignored, you will be heard.
The meeting is not closed.
Right, just so they understand.
Okay, well, if there's no other uh, comments or discussion for tonight, if someone wants to. Make a motion to continue this project to the June first meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue this project to the June first meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, uh, vote on the roll call, we don't, we no longer have Reg. Uh, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board.
Thank you for your time, thank you, have a great day. Okay, that's the last agenda item, so the the last thing of business is the reorganization of the board. Um, as you know, Reggie has now left. And this will be my last meeting, so um. We, that lead, that will leave, and I'm just for the record, my 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 letter of resignation uh. Continues through, I think it, what was it, Pam, through Thursday or Friday, and I did that intentionally so that. If you needed me to sign any plans. I didn't know if you needed any plans that were coming out of this meeting.
Um, there probably are, but unfortunately, um, I'm in Florida. So.
Okay.
Anything that needs to be typed. Will need to wait till I get back.
Wonderful, all right, well, then that's, we tried, um, okay, so.
So, um, you know, you can. Come by and sign it then.
Well, I'll be, I'll technically.
Be dated for the date of this meeting.
I'm sorry?
They'll be dated for the date of this meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're back, uh, before us now is the reorganization of the board. So um, there's three, there's uh, four active members here tonight. So we need to um, I guess, first of all, nominate uh, a future chairman of the planning board. And with someone, I think this, there was a candidate that was suggested. So, if someone.
Uh, because you're leaving us, Mr. Chair, I did um, throw my hat in the ring for the position. Certainly will never fill your shoes, but uh, I am um. On the table for the position.
Okay, so Tony Gonzalez is is a candidate, she's introduced herself into nomination as a candidate, is there anybody else? All right, um. I guess so, uh, if there's nobody else, I guess we can close the nominations for for chairman. I guess now we can go to vote, um. Vote on the roll call, so Larry Hassan?
Definitely, yes.
That's, that was a definitely yes. That was, that was emphatic.
She stepped up, so definitely, yes, I support her.
Well, I like that. And I'm sure she appreciates your support, Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie, uh, not Reggie, pardon me, James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a resounding yes. And I personally think that I congratulate you and applaud you for stepping up to do that, Tony, I think you'll make a great chairman. Um, I I really.
First female chairperson.
Yeah, woman, chairperson.
Yeah.
First female.
First female chairperson of the Brockton Planning Board. This was made, and typically, from my, if memory serves, I think that um, we generally um, appoint. I don't, you call it a vice chair, or what what was the, was it a vice chair, or was it a? An.
Co-chair?
How about acting chairman? Because you're going to. You're going to need.
We have a, we have a clerk and the clerk serves as vice chair.
Okay, so who would like to be the clerk?
Larry.
Larry.
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I know you're. That was a great nomination, so I think nominations are closed.
Uh, 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 Pam can't nominate anybody.
I can't nominate, I was just suggesting.
No, she was, Pam was just trying to, well, she was just trying to help out.
Dying to hear what Rob's trying to say.
There is another position that we need to fill, and that is the uh, representative on the VVA.
Right, but and I was going to get to that, Mr. May.
Right, but it it's just in my, I'm not nominating anybody. But we might want to have someone with a little more experience. And understanding of the zoning board. To serve in that position as opposed to someone who is a rookie, even though he has a full head of hair.
Oh, me? Who did you have? Okay. All right, so can we, can we, all right, can we finish with the clerk then? Larry, I I think someone, I, it was very soft, but I think someone nominated you as clerk.
Second.
And that position entails what?
Reading the agenda. And managing the meeting if the chair is not available.
Tony's missing.
Fine, I I accept.
Let the record show, so he's been nominated, he's been duly nominated as as clerk. Uh, vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
That was not a resounding yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes, so we have a new, we have a new chair and a new clerk. Congratulations, and now we need a representative to the zoning board of appeals. Everybody understands what that entails, right? And didn't you, was it, wasn't, didn't you have a situation where you were splitting it between two, Pam?
I was, um, and the zoning board was um, happy with that, um, well, it was Larry and Tony that were. Was splitting, you did a month, Larry did a month, Tony did a month.
Is that still good with Tony and Larry?
So, that was, that was a temporary plan because uh, former, our former board member um, is no longer with us. So that that was a total set, temporary plan, we need a permanent candidate for the zoning meetings.
And.
Yeah, ideally, you're right, ideally, we need one person, there's a liaison between. From the planning board to the zoning board of appeals, but as you can tell, that's kind of a difficult. Task, or a difficult, a difficult request.
Are we at this point too technically short, a planning board member?
We are too short, yeah.
You are technically too short, so it, at this point, if you could agree to.
Alternate?
Tony, you're doing the next meeting, right?
Yes, yes, so if you're going to suggest that we continue to rotate and throw Mr. Sweeney into that rotation until we have. Two additional board members, and then from there, we'll see um, who's interested in the strongest candidate and vote from there. That sound good?
I'm okay with it.
Don't move.
I missed that.
You want to just go with that concept, uh, there's no point in. There's no point.
You can leave them unfilled at this time and wait until the board is filled and then just.
Yeah.
He would be the applicant for the May.
Okay, and and obviously, it goes without saying, the mayor is well aware that he's got two open spots on planning.
Correct.
I think he's got, I think he's got one or two open spots on alternates on zoning anyway, but.
And I did chat with the mayor yesterday briefly, just saying, you know, what a huge loss it is to lose you, Mr. Chair, and that um, we. Do need a candidate with someone, someone with your background and knowledge and skill. So, um, we need to work together to find somebody that can come halfway close to you.
Someone, someone had passed an ordinance, and I forget, this goes back in the in the in the rules and rosters of the city council. And it was a well-intended uh, ordinance, but they, it's, you're supposed to have a registered person. I believe it's on the on the planning board, either registered engineer or registered landservier, and that's. You know, an easy thing to request, it's not so easy to fill, it's just there, it's just, it's just not an easy thing to fill, so.
Right.
Yep, but that's, ideally, that was the, that was the, that was the goal, that was the, that was the goal, but in any case, um. Um. I, I will say, congratulations and good luck to the planning board, I I. Hopefully, I've made a contribution, I've enjoyed my time, it's interesting how these things come about, because. When I first gone on, I, my first. Uh, my first, I would just say, attraction was to the zoning board of appeals, because I was before the zoning board of appeals quite a bit in my workdays. And I always liked the function of the zoning board. And I remember then Mr. Mayor Carpenter said, well, put you on the zoning board, he said, but we need. We need a couple of open spots on the planning board, and he said, I'll put you on the zoning, but I got to have you on planning, and I said. And he said, I'll put you on the zoning, but I gotta have you on planning. And I said, well, I just want you to know, I want to go on the zoning board. So the best they had was an alternate on the zoning board, which I just resigned from. And I went on the planning and then at that time, Dave Wheeler was the chairman. And I said, well, Dave's the chairman, so I'll be the vice chair in this and that. And then, as you know, the rest of the story, he abruptly left and that's how life is. I mean, you, it ends up that I was the chair, which no regrets, don't get me wrong, right? But it's just how, it's how life works. But anyway, I've enjoyed it and I wish all of you the best. And I appreciate everybody's contribution. We have to keep in mind that we're, you know, unpaid, uncompensated public servants. And it does take time out of your day, especially if you've got young families and especially if you're working full time. So the city appreciates it. I know the, you know, the, the mayor's office appreciates it as well. So thank you for your cooperation and your, and your attendance. Yes.
Bob, as soon as we are all vaccinated, we will have cake.
Oh, I love that idea. I like it.
I'm half vaccinated.
I'm fully vaccinated.
And Bob, I just, Bob, I just wanted to say too, that I really, really appreciate what you've done over the short time I've been here on the board and, and, and I, uh, what Tony was saying too, based on your knowledge and experience of being able to have to read plans and have the discussions with the applicants and other members of the city. Goes without saying, it's, it's a, it was a huge benefit for me to follow along with that because I, you know, there are some things I can understand and read, but nowhere near or close the, the, you know, what you brought to the table. So we're going to miss that. But I appreciate the new chair, the new member, James Sweeney, and the new chair, Tony. And a lot of the work, obviously that riser and Rob and Pam and obviously what Chief Williams has done too with his board, without this group, um, we wouldn't get half of the stuff done. So.
I mean, that's, that goes without saying. You've got a great, well, first of all, let me say thank you for the comments. Give yourself some credit because I've watched you, all, all of you, and you, 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 you're getting a little bit more confident and you're making your comments and you're reading the plans better. And yes, you've got a great support staff there. So it's, it's going to help that support staff is going to see things that you may not see. It's just the nature of the process. So consider yourself fortunate that you've got them. So with that, I guess we'll see you around the block, as they say.
I sure hope so.
Yes. Have a great, and good night. I'll miss you guys too. It's become, you know, it becomes a part of your life.
Oh, we'll talk.
Yeah.
We'll talk.
I know where you live too.
We've got some, the good news, going forward, you've got some interesting projects ahead of you. That certainly is one of them. I, I like what we did on Thatcher Street. I think Thatcher Street resolved itself well. There's certainly some other ones that I think that we, because of the contribution that we made as a board, I think we made, we had, we had a good end result. So that's what you want. That's what, that's what the function of the board is. And as I say, you've got a great support staff there to get you through it. So with that, have a great evening. I'm sure we'll, we'll be talking to all of you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Somebody needs to move to adjourn.
We'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and, and second to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.